Good, okay. Welcome, everyone. November 27, 2018 Select Board Meeting. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you can all stand.
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a good crowd here tonight, which is nice to see. Hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. Before we get going, I just wanted to say a thank you to the Fire Department and the Police Department in that plumber, whoever that plumber may be.
It was a Mason.
Was it a Mason? For the quick response to the fire we had on Route 10. They did a great job, so thank you to everybody that was involved. Really appreciate it. Just a quick announcement, ECAT has a new director, Jen Ramsey, and she's there, she's gonna be there tomorrow.
Jen Ramsey's gonna be, Robert Floyd, 15 East Street, hi. Jen Ramsey, she's from the Northampton Cable Public Access TV Station, second in charge, started Friday. Yesterday, she was at a board meeting, and tomorrow at noon to 5:00 at the station will be a walk-through. And we're going to have her here come address the board in January.
Okay. So if anybody can be there, it's in Eastworks, Suite 102, I believe?
Yeah, when you go in, you take a left and go all the way down, it's on the left-hand side.
I'm gonna try to get there.
It's past where the Apollo Restaurant used to be.
Used to be, okay. So if anybody can be there, it'd be great. And Finance Committee, we now have two vacancies, so if anybody's interested in serving, please let us know, because we're down to just a quorum now, so if all three can't be there, we don't have a quorum. Okay. Now, appointments. George Plouffe to the Master Plan Implementation Committee at Large, term to expire 6/30. Is George here? No? Okay. This is the last person, so the committee is full, which is great, so we'll have a report on that a little later. So can we have a motion to accept George as a at-large?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going on to our favorite subject, tax classification. We're having a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing for the tax classification, and Doric Dodds, Chair of the Board of Assessors, is going to go through his statement, and afterwards, we'll take public comment.
All right. As said, Doric Dodds, Board of Assessors. As you all know already, the state makes provisions for an annual reconsideration of whether this town or any other is suitable for a split tax rate. According to state guidelines, we stand with our usual assessment that it really doesn't fit in a town like this one. Our overall property values, as aggregated, are about 94 percent residential, only about 6 percent with the other classes, commercial, industrial, and personal property. With ratios that skewed, there is little tangible benefit to the town or townspeople in bothering to split up a tax rate. We recommend against. I do have a statement similar to last year's, if you'd like to have it on file.
Okay. Thank you. So you're recommending one class, same as we've had before. Anything else you want to say on this, before we take public comment?
Hope it was a good Thanksgiving.
Okay. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment on this? This is gonna be easy. Okay. So we have to have a motion, so...
To keep a single tax rate?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, I'll tell you what, since I'm the Chair, why don't you, you have the motion in front of you? Why don't you read it?
Okay. I'll move for the Board of Selectmen to vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2019 tax rates, and set the residential factor at 1.0 with a corresponding CIP shift of 1.0 pending approval of the town's annual tax cap, tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion by the board?
I just want to mention that from time to time, people make a comment about why don't we have a different tax rate for business, and I know that there's a lot of online discussion about this, but we have a recommendation from assessors. I just want to say that we don't want to do anything to discourage businesses from coming into town, so I'd just like to go, like to make that comment, that it seems like an easy solution to generate revenue, but given the downside of it, I don't think it's worth it.
Plus, it's from a small base.
Yeah, well, there's, exactly.
Right, very small base.
Yeah. If we had a larger base, I think we'd have more reason to do it.
Right.
Hi, Martha.
Hi, Martha Lamy, Principal Assessor. I just want to say that shifting, if you have a split tax rate, all it does is shift. It doesn't increase revenue. It just lessens it for homeowners and raises it.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, it doesn't do anything to increase revenue.
The levy's the same amount?
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, because the levy's the same amount.
It's the same, it just shifts it.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any more discussion?
That's a, that's a good point.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to vote to close the public hearing?
Do we need to do the motion first? Because I've got a...
You can do it either way.
Yeah, so we've got a motion and a second. We've got a discussion, so take a vote to approve the motion.
Aye. Right?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. Okay, so we're gonna close the public meeting and go on with the agenda.
You have to make a motion to, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We need a motion, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir. Okay, reports, Selectmen. Maureen, do you want to start first?
Actually, I'm gonna ask you to start on the other side, because I have some notes in a file, I'm gonna grab them.
Okay, Jim?
The only thing I have, Planning Board, December 5th, is our public hearing for the marijuana bylaw. That's coming up quick, next Wednesday, a week from the next Wednesday.
It should be an interesting meeting, so hopefully we have a good crowd.
Yeah, I heard they're gonna have samples.
I didn't say that.
Okay. Yes, I only attended, there was only one meeting scheduled, it was the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and we're hearing a report on that tonight from the Chair, Mike Rosenberg, so I'll just move on.
Okay. Matt?
I don't, I mean, for CAP Committee, CAP Committee hasn't met. I don't have any updates from Board of Health, and we're gonna get to PQB later today, tonight.
Back to you, Maureen.
Okay. So there aren't any updates from Community Preservation? There is a meeting, I believe, December 5th? Is that, we're not sure yet? Okay. But there's no activity, and Council of Aging, there's been no meeting, but there is a new Facebook page. Open space, there was a meeting this Wednesday night, and it's a follow-up to discussion with, Kestrel came to talk to us about the possibility of setting up an account at Kestrel Land Trust for people to donate for acquisition and/or maintenance of land in town, and so it's a follow-up discussion, and that's at 6:00 on Wednesday. And then there are a few updates from the Conservation Commission, a few things, maybe, Ed, you might be able to update us on a few things that came up. One is, just a reminder that vehicles are not allowed on the Zipta Conservation Farm fields, so please be sure to park by the road, especially with all the water that's in the field. It just ruins it. And if anybody is doing any walking on conservation property, and if there's anything that you notice in terms of downed trees or whatnot, please be sure to contact the Conservation Commission. And, let's see, and then there was just a question about the status of the zip-to-roof and securing that with some kind of a tarp or something, and then also, we need to have an update on the town's open space and recreation plan. Ed, maybe you can give us that update. And the other thing that came up, I know Francine and Ed, you went to a meeting, which was for the Barnes Aquaphar Protection Advisory Committee. Is there any plan to have an additional meeting? Remember, you went to that meeting in East Hampton, Francine? Is that, is that still meeting? That was just a question?
The one that took place this past summer?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of any, and I would guess someone on the Water Commission would be more apprised of what the meeting schedule is, so I haven't received any notice.
And actually, we should have a visit from someone from PVPC on that topic in December. Actually, the original group, the agreement, has run its course, so currently, that group doesn't exist, so they're looking at ways at actually starting a new agreement, and that's what they're gonna address when they come in December.
Okay, good. Thanks. That's it.
And I have nothing new, so Ed, if you could go into your report?
First and foremost, Police Chief Michael Goyette has submitted his letter of retirement to the Board of Selectmen, which is attached to my report, effective 11/31/2018, and I'm gonna read that letter. To the Southampton Board of Selectmen, this letter is to follow up on a conversation that I had with Town Administrator Ed Gibson on November 14, 2018. On the 14th, I advised Town Administrator Ed Gibson that due to unfortunate and unforeseen circumstances beyond my control in regards to health-related issues within my immediate family, I advise that I would be retiring from my position as Chief of Police with a request date of December 31, 2018, in order to be available for my family, and that I hope the Board would approve my retirement for that date. I actually had an earlier conversation with Ed advising I would be taking time off at different points for appointments I needed to attend. Looking at the time I have been taking off already and the time I know I will need to take in the future, my decision to retire is the right decision. I do not want the department to fall behind. It is not fair to the department or to the town. The department needs to move forward. I have happily given 30-plus years to the town, and now it's time I give my time to my family when they need me. The part of the decision was easy for me. However, part of my decision is very difficult for me after serving the Southampton Police Department for over 30 years, with the last three-plus years as Chief of Police. It has been an incredible journey from when I started back in 1989 as a patrolman, and through the years attaining the rank of Sergeant, Lieutenant, and then Chief. I have been, I have seen people at their worst and at their best. I would like to think that I have helped as many people as I could have when they were having the worst day of their life, just a bad day or just down on their luck. Helping people and making a positive difference in people's lives is the most rewarding aspect of my career. I have made Southampton my home and enjoyed becoming part of the community. As an outsider all those years ago, I was welcomed by the wonderful people of Southampton. The people of Southampton are truly some amazing people. I have had such a pleasure of meeting so many of them over the years and making friendships. Thank you to the citizens of Southampton. As for the department, my second family, where do I begin? I can't speak highly enough about the officers and dispatchers. The town is lucky to have such professional individuals that put their community first. The integrity, integrity, dedication, and drive they have always doing the right thing is unsurpassed. I am proud of all of them and to call them brothers and sisters. Upon my retirement, I would hope that Lieutenant Ian Illingsworth will take over command. I hope to see him as the next Chief of Police in Southampton. He has my unwavering support. He gives 110 percent of himself to the department, has been second-in-command over the last three years. Prior to that, he was a Sergeant for 16 years. He has demonstrated to me that he is 100 percent qualified for the position. The department, the department will continue to succeed and move forward under his leadership as Chief. That is what the department and townspeople deserve. In closing, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Department Heads, Town Staff, and of course, my department, police and dispatch, for all they have done, do, and will continue to do. You all have made my time here in Southampton a pleasure. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve and protect Southampton from patrolman to Chief of Police, respectfully, Michael R. Goyette, Chief of Police, Southampton.
Okay. So, just for the paperwork, we need to take a vote here, because there in the contract was a 60-day notice, and this is short of that, but we all know the reason behind it, and it's, you know, it's sad to see the Police Chief go under these circumstances, but he's gotta take care of his family first, so I'd like to hear a motion where we accept the resignation as requested in the timeframe requested.
So.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And before, obviously, he retires, we'll have to appoint an acting chief and go through the process of looking for a new chief, but we can do that at another meeting. You want to continue it?
Now, would the Selectmen like to post the availability or the opening for interim Police Chief, at least within the Southampton Police Department?
I think within the department, I'd go along with that.
Within the department, yes, but before we post permanently, I think we want to review the job description and update it and everything if necessary, so, sure.
Okay. Thank you. Just to let you know, BG Mechanical has repaired the boilers in the town hall and has found and repaired the slight gas leak which was noticeable in the back town hall stairwell. I have started scheduling interviews for the administrative assistant position for the Board of Selectmen's and my office at the end of this week and the beginning of next week. I'll be spending the next week compiling and finalizing the annual liquor license and common victicular entertainment, amusement, and car dealer renewals and related paperwork, which are currently being returned to the town. We have received word from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that our planning assistance grant, which they applied for on Southampton's behalf for stormwater planning and management, has been approved. The Highway Department has completed the trenching and placed the conduit in the ground from the gazebo to the flagpole to add a spotlight on the American flag in front of the town hall. Blanchard and Daly will be doing the actual wiring of the electrical circuit and adding the light for this project, which is being funded through community preservation funds. Would also like to let you know that the drinking water protection grant application was submitted to the state within the timeline stated. Old business, the vendor references and credentials for the replacement of the asphalt shingle roof on the Conan Park Pavilion and rebuilding the chimney have been positive. The low quote received, not including any required decking replacement, was for $14,000. The next special project I will be working on is finding a qualified consultant to perform the feasibility envelope study evaluation of the police station, which is the old town hall on East Street. And Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has estimated that an update to the town's open space and recreation plan will cost approximately $14,000. They have identified either a DLTA grant or CPA funds as the best alternative funding sources, and there's a attachment to my report which outlines their estimated budget and the steps that would need to be taken. The DLT grants are usually announced to PVPC's member communities in the November-December timeframe. I haven't seen them announced as of yet, but I will keep you posted. Upcoming, December Select Board meetings are Tuesday, the 11th, and Thursday, the 20th, and then January 2019 Select Board meetings are Thursday, the 3rd, and Tuesdays, the 8th and 22nd.
Can we go back to G just for a second?
Sure.
Conan Park Roof and Chimney. Did the vendors say that they were gonna be able to start before the winter and do it now, or they have to wait till the spring?
We haven't finalized that or the contract, that's okay.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Could I ask a question too?
Sure.
Vicky, I know that when the question came up about this open space and recreation plan, I think I sent you an email to say, where did the funds come from last time it was done? Because I think it was, I think you said the Select Board expense was one, and then the other was from somewhere else. And do you remember how much it was for? Maybe 500 sticks in my head.
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmeri Meadow Road. So, if I can remember what I was looking at, it was back in 2012, so it was, it was in June before I started, in August. I think there was a grant that we received for like $5,000, and somehow, it got put into Selectmen expenses, and that's where the expense got paid out of, which wasn't correct, but we paid part from a grant, it was like 4,300 bucks, and the rest, they paid out of the Selectmen expenses. I'm not, I'd have to go back and double-check, pull that invoice out, but I can send you that tomorrow.
Okay.
But the reason it was in the Selectmen expenses was because they put that money in there and it shouldn't have went in there, so...
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we did get grant money for that particular part of it, for that open space.
And PVPC did it last time. Is $14,000 much higher than it was even like six years ago?
It sounds higher than what it was in 2012.
So it was 5,000 plus four? So 5,000, you said, from the Selectmen?
That, the $5,000 was the grant that got put into the Selectmen expenses, which shouldn't have happened that way, but I'll have to just double-check.
Okay, all right, I was just curious to see if, because they did it the last time, I just wondered if it went up that much.
You know, part of it could have came from that piece of the grant, and some of it could have came from something else, so I'll just have to double-check.
So you're gonna update us?
Yeah. I'll just send you an email tomorrow with what, I'll have to pull that invoice out from, yes.
And if I remember correctly, when Marla was here last, did she say the plan was due by the end of December?
It's due by the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, June 30th.
By June.
And that enables us to apply for grants, and we've got two grants out even the last couple of months, the water protection one and the Glendale Road one.
Yep, yep.
But June 30th, it's coming quick also.
I know. Could I just ask one other, can I ask one other question?
Sure.
I think, John, you and Ed, we're gonna have a discussion about the roof on the Zipta barn, about checking in with the Highway Department or something and securing, talking about a tarp. I think that's the way we left it last Select Board meeting. Is there any, do you remember that?
I remember the tarp and everything. Did you talk to Randall on that one?
No, I haven't, but I really don't think either the nailing of the boards or tarping is necessary. I think if we can find somebody, they can probably just nail those loose metal panels down and do it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, you know, I don't know if we can, but the, Ed, the roofer that's doing the Conan, maybe you can talk to that roofer and see if that roofer would do it. It's not gonna be that much, so, you know...
And there may be a local roofing company that, or contractor, that'll be able to do it without making the hour-and-a-half trip, too.
I say, yeah, my experience is a job that's small, I don't know if you're gonna get anybody, but whatever you can come up with, it'd be great.
Can you do that without bidding and prevailing wage and all that?
It's gonna be so small, yeah.
Okay.
It will be prevailing wage, because that goes at dollar zero, but you don't have to bid it out. Okay. Old business, 111 Glendale Road, I'm assuming nothing new, except next week will be December, and December's supposed to be the month we're gonna find out if we get the grant or not, so that, six months ago, seemed like a long ways, and now, now it's next week or the next few weeks, so have you heard anything different, Ed?
What's that?
You ever heard anything different on the grant?
No, I have not.
Okay. So hopefully, a meeting or two down the road will have an answer for that.
Will that likely be Marla that will get the letter about that?
You would get it.
I believe I was the one that was left as the contract for the state on that, so I would think it would be me.
Okay.
And actually, Mark Wamsley might know before anybody, before we even get a notification.
I guess whoever gets the answer will spread it quickly.
If it's good news.
Yeah, bad news, don't say.
Okay, be that way. Okay, fiscal year 2019 budget and expenditure review and fiscal '18 closeout. Vicky?
Oh, okay.
I guess you're back up. We want to review the, well, why don't you do the fiscal '18 closeout first?
Okay, so our free cash was certified back on November 7th. So the general fund ended up with $305,273. The enterprise fund for water retained earnings was $527,106. And the enterprise fund for the transfer station was $5,680. So, some pieces to that, we spent almost everything that we had in our budget and then some for fiscal year '18. So left that was unencumbered, unexpended, was only $35,841, which isn't a ton of money. Luckily enough, we collected more money in revenues than we actually budgeted. Part of that was motor vehicle was much greater than what we originally had budgeted. We normally budget on the conservative side. Then we had some taxes that we got back, taxes, liens redeemed, some miscellaneous revenue, some other school transportation money that we didn't budget for, so that all, you know, got put into the big pool, but if we hadn't gotten those things, we probably would have been a lot shorter on the, the, not retained earnings, but the free cash, because we spent pretty much everything that we had. Which isn't a bad thing, it's just that you just don't have it in free cash later on. You didn't go over what you spent, but, you know, our cherry sheet estimates were a little bit higher in terms, lower in terms of money that we got from the state, but those are the pieces that, that fall into that free cash. And, you know, previous years, last year, we had $423,000, $496,000. 2015 had been the lowest with $222,000, and 2014, we had $511,000. So anything that you don't spend at the end of the fiscal year gets put into free cash, you know, where you can appropriate at town meeting for any lawful purpose. Like I said, this year was only $33,000 that we had left, which was kinda close.
Vicky, do you have balances on like the stabilization fund and things like that at the close of the year?
Yep. Yep. One of the other things, so let me see. I'm trying to get rid of paper. So then, with the free cash of $305,000, we would go ahead at our next special town meeting, based on the policy that the select board put forth a couple of years ago. We're gonna do 35%, 30% to the two stabilizations, and then 25% to the OPEB retirement. And then the rest would, you know, people put in warrant articles for one-time purchases, one-time expenses, you know, for the remaining of that free cash money. So at the end of 18, our stabilizations had, operating had $373,687.11. Capital had $17,545.09. And then our ambulance stabilization, which would go to paid, the money we borrowed for the ambulance we just purchased, was $76,770.02. But that comes directly from ambulance revenues, so.
Capital stabilization.
Capital was 17,545.
Okay.
One of the other things that happened in 2018 was when we originally did the budget, we didn't put enough money in our overlay account, which is for our abatements for property taxes. So our abatement overlay was in a deficit of $7,200, which will need to get raised on the recap this particular year, when we go to do the recap for this year. But in doing the recap last year, when I spoke to the Department of Revenue, we increased our overlay in the budget for this $19,000 to $80,000, which was a lot more than what we had put in 18. So that was something that we'll have to raise, you know, that's obviously in total.
Do you think you could summarize, I wrote down as quickly as reading the numbers, summarize and just get us an email with this information tomorrow? It would be good for us to have. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess basically, you know, one of the things we have to be cognizant of when we go to do, you know, we come to the end this year, when we do those year-end transfers, you know, transferring money, because people are working over their allotted hours per their PCF, even though it's in their same budget from their expenses, that gets to be, you know, they save the money on expenses, because they know they're gonna work over. Obviously, if there's a material emergency sort of situation that needs to happen, you know, that probably could be okay, but we wanna avoid like transferring monies back and forth just because people, you know, wanna work, because they've worked over during the year and they're not cognizant of what's in their budget. But that would leave us with, you know, as again this year, with very little money to put into that free cash pool in the end. Like I said, it's not horrible, but then you don't have anything for things that need to be repaired or fixed or purchased, kind of a one-time thing, you know, going forward, so.
Could I just ask the pattern of spending at the, the end of the fiscal year? Do you see a lot more activity when people have balances left to kinda spend down?
You do see some, because some of the larger departments have larger budgets, and they have a tendency to sometimes, I don't wanna say save, but, you know, they, they are anticipating certain things potentially could happen, so they save some of their money for those potentials, but then those things don't come to fruition, and so they have some left to spend at the end. There's not usually a lot. What I usually see the most of is transferring to cover wages, because people have worked over, you know, during the year. Which, you know, if you have certain projects that have to be done and whatnot, but past practice has been, you get $1,000 in your budget, if you're done June 1st, that's it, you don't work anymore. I mean, I don't know if you wanna go to that extreme, but, you know, if there's nothing that is really drawing you to having to work two and three hours extra consistently, then, you know, we really should be holding people to what their PCFs pretty much say. You know, occasionally that's gonna happen, but if it just happens because if you have too much work, then maybe you need to get some help, you know, if you're working overtime all the time. I'm just throwing that out there, so.
Yeah, sometimes it's easier to do overtime than have a full staff person, so.
Well, exactly, exactly, but I guess we should be aware of that when we do those year-end transfers at the end.
And with police, fire, and highway, I mean, depending what happens, what activity, they're up and down. Sometimes the police has a deficit, sometimes they have a surplus, depending on activity.
Depending on activity, yeah. You know, I'm thinking more so like in the lines of the people who have one-time line items, like my office. I only have so many hours and that's it. Joyce can't work extra hours, because I don't have any extra money. But what happens is, is people work those extra hours and they save their money and their expenses to transfer to that at the end of the year, and we just have to make sure we're cognizant of that, that's all.
I think the closer people can be to their line item, items, it's not just a total budget.
Correct.
And I think that the money goes back to the town, frankly, if the, if things, contingencies don't happen, then it actually goes back to the town.
For decision-making, not for the department.
And actually, now we've signed on to have the town administrator oversee all of the invoices, right, for a lot of the expenses, which she hadn't been previously.
The warrants, yeah.
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 But that's after the fact.
But still, at least there's some oversight.
But, but that's part of what my job is, as the accountant, like that's what my law says I'm supposed to be doing. So I definitely, as I said in the department head meeting, I'll ask those questions of people. I'm an equal opportunity picker, I'll pick on whoever needs to be picked on.
But, you know, no disrespect, Vicky, but the department heads all report to the town administrator, who's the chief financial officer, so part of it was to have him be involved in some of the spending to try to keep it tight.
Yeah, I think it's great having two people nagging at them.
There's multiple checks are always better than single checks.
And also, another check is us looking at these expense reports, which we're gonna do next. Sorry, are you all done the?
Yeah.
One thing I normally do, and I omitted, I could tell everybody this is going out live and it's also recorded, so if anybody's camera shy, run for the door now, but they got the back of your heads for a while, so. Sorry about that, I wanted to put it on record. Okay, so we're gonna review the fiscal 19 budget year-to-date, and the last report we got was just recently. It went to November 15th, 18, which is four and a half months, according to my calculator, is about 38%. So as we're looking at these, the percent expended in the far-right column should be around 38% to be right on budget. And I know I went through these before, and just went through them again. There's a couple deviations that we can go over, but in general, people seem to be doing very well at keeping to that 38 number. Does anybody see anything in here that they wanna look at specifically?
I'm assuming that general highway wages is at 50% because of a retired, retirement payout?
They, they also have highway, and they have winter roads that they combine every year.
We haven't used the winter roads yet, we'll be using them this next time.
That should level it out when we do that. Winter roads is in a separate category.
Yeah.
And Randall knows that he's gotta stay within budget.
He does.
Can I, can I ask about the revenue?
Yeah, whatever you like.
Again, there are no estimates in there, so I can't tell from here if we're on track or not. I don't know if we're in the black or in the red. I can only assume that the original budget, that total on the expense side, represents what we anticipated as the revenue. But again, I, I'm not seeing any estimated revenue posted.
There's no estimated revenues until after the tax rate is set, because there is definitely some fluctuation in the, the actual, in the receipts. The local receipts, which would be meals tax.
Excise tax.
Excise tax for cars and whatnot. So what happens is, is you estimate a new growth number, and you estimate the taxes are gonna be what the taxes are, but you estimate your new growth number. That number comes in higher or lower, so those local receipts is the place that I can make the tax rate balance. So if you, say you put 180 grand in for a new growth, but it comes in 120, you got 60 grand that I need to be able to put into a line item in order to balance what we actually passed at town meeting. Usually that's in the local receipts part. That's why I usually, you know, when, when we've been budgeting over the past, you know, six years, conservative for motor vehicle, because that's the one where if you add 20 or 30 grand, it actually isn't any more than what the actual is. So you can make that up in that particular, you know, in that category. So that's why there's no budget items in there, because it's not gonna be exactly with what we, we put together when we put the budget together. It'll be, there'll be a variation of that. Most of it's pretty close, but there will be some variation of that at that point in time.
To a degree, it's our best estimate.
Yes, yep.
But other, other than the tax, and excise tax and property tax, there are other categories for which we have no estimated revenue either, and that comes from a different source.
No, but that departmental revenue also plays into that local receipts page on the tax recap. So those are some that you can adjust down, up or down a couple thousand dollars, based on whatever is needed to balance that budget at, at that point in time.
Vicky, when do we reimburse by FRTA? Because it's 400-something percent off.
So every month, I send a spreadsheet to their accountant, and they will send us a check, you know, within the next three weeks. Some of that is because Jen is receipting from October, so the October receipts aren't in there. Or even November. Actually, I didn't send November yet, so it would be October, that's probably, and we would have had November expenses, but I wouldn't have sent them the information for them to send us that money down. So that will usually be in a deficit by a month or two.
And some of these grants, I mean, they're only paid out once a year or something, so.
Yeah, some of them are reimbursable grants. If you look on, with the E911 grants, some of the other police grants are.
They sell the police grant.
Are reimbursable grants, so we have to spend the money first, and then they will send us that when we're done. Like the Council on Agent, the walking club is reimbursable, you know, so Joan will send that information, and then they'll send us that money for what she spent.
On the general insurance, we're like 93%. Is that just a prepay?
Yep.
Hampshire Regional operating expense.
They bill us quarterly.
Okay, that's why that's at 50.
Mm-hmm, yep. And vocational tuition, which I'm sure these gentlemen will speak to shortly. Usually it's billed, you know, so many days till November, we'll probably get a bill. The school gets it first, and then they submit it with their, with their bills. So usually November will get the first one, based on the number of days and the number of students.
Any more line items you wanna bring up?
How do you feel about, I mean, do you have an opinion on how we're doing? Areas from improvement?
You know, we've had some difficulties with the HVAC system here, so that was an area of concern in terms of having them come repeatedly, you know, we spent quite a bit of money to get this, you know, whatever issues we've had, so we just need to be sure, and I'm sure Ed will keep an eye on that, you know, the building expense for this building going forward. You know, who knows what the spring will bring, if the air conditioning, but we've had a lot of heat issues, and, and so that would be something that I would just make sure that we keep our eye on, for the most part, so.
Ed, was that door, I think, didn't Christina Mattson say that she was, she has a historical and building background? Was that something that was done or going to be done, or will that help?
It was something she was gonna get back to us on some specifics with.
Yeah, I think she was gonna put.
Made you actually, over this wintertime, is actually, you may have seen some constructions being done in houses or whatever, you can actually get adhesive plastic, zipper in it for like a door, and I just put that over the whole thing.
It's not so much the cost of the heat, it's that the, we've had repairs to the HVAC system.
Right, of course.
But it just remind me of it.
Yep.
But I, I believe she was going to get us a rough idea together, and maybe a bill, bill of materials that was needed.
Because we do have $10,000 in CPA that was appropriated for that door.
But she seemed to think that by restoring it would be a lot less, and it would keep the, you know, integrity of the building.
The other thing is, I am starting to put together a little analysis of our net metering credits to see if it's really gonna be beneficial for us in the end. I mean, it saves a little bit of money, but I don't know, I mean, it's better than nothing, but I'm just kinda going through that so that you guys can kinda see, you know, what the outcome of that is. Because, you know, when we, a couple of years ago, signed up with GDF-SUWES and switched to NG, some departments actually spent more money when we switched over than actually if we had saved with Eversource, so. And I had done that for the finance committee a couple of years ago. It wasn't tons of money, but you'd, you'd think, because at that point in time, Eversource said, oh, we're gonna hike everything up 47%, we switched to a different company, I thought that you'd see a bigger gain in savings, but you really didn't, so.
Guessing on energy futures and all that.
I know, but I'm just gonna go through it anyway, just 'cause I'm like, ah, just so that we can kinda see, you know, is it really gonna be worth the next 20 years? Because that's what the contract was for.
Did it meet the hyper?
20 years.
And just to let you know, the whole thing, for whatever the savings are, it is an accounting nightmare. I will stick up for Vicky on this, trying to keep everything straight, see if we're getting what we're supposed to. And at first, they didn't even break it down into different accounts. They just gave it one straight.
One bill.
So we didn't know how to apply or anything, so.
Okay, anything else on the revenue or expense report for Vicky?
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you. Old business still, Hampshire Regional Budget and Expenditure and Agreement Review. Is there anything, I don't think we've had a chance to go over the details, and we wanna discuss it at this point, so it's just sitting in there for old business, so.
Yeah, it's on there as a tickler as we get updated reports.
Yeah, same with the East Street Bridge, there's no update, Ed, is there?
There's a, a little, little bit of one. I have, I have talked to PVPC, I actually have talked to MassDOT. The chances of getting that project on the tip basically are nil. But, you know, one of the things that we had talked about, and we really haven't, at this level, haven't followed up or had any conversations on it, is one of the options, if we wanted to turn back that grant money and not appropriate a million and a half of our, our own to do it, is, obviously, that bridge is currently rated at three levels of five. The, one has to drop to a three to make it eligible for tip to be structurally deficient. You know, this, one of the things that VHB had talked about before is, one of the alternatives is if we didn't go forward at this particular time and basically replace the bridge, one of the alternatives would be, did we wanna make minor repairs to that bridge so it would last maybe three, four, or five years? Be more travelable, but actually, in that three, four, or five years, probably the underneath or whatever would probably fall into one of those structurally deficient categories and be eligible to go for the tip, or some other funding, or the state's bridge replacement program, and then look at those options to replace the entire bridge at that time.
Well, if, I, I mean, how long does it take to go from a five to a three? If we just were to leave it? Has anybody estimated that, or is there a?
It's different for different bridges, you know, if I had to guess, you're probably looking at a minimum of three years.
And I would think depends on what kind of traffic goes over it.
Right. How heavy it is, how often, what the weather is, all of those variables.
What was the cost to replace the whole thing again?
2.6.
And were the, we got a grant of one?
We've got a grant of one, correct.
Would it be worth looking at a bond or something for the town to complete it? Because that's holding up the street.
That's, well, that's right, and that's another thing to look at and consider, is, you know, probably if we wanted to move forward at this point, it would fall back to us, so did, at the special, would we wanna put on, you know, a, an article for borrowing of $1.5 million to complete that and do it at this time? But actually, it was actually, when I was talking to MassDOT, it was one of the questions that had come up of, you know, what about the street? Because the street's been basically talked about for about 10 years also. And, and, you know, I told them that the bridge had kind of become the important focus point, and the idea was that we do the bridge first, and then the street would follow. Just, just because of the planning, the safe streets, the thought of process of, you know, were we gonna put sidewalks on that, and?
Yeah, but the, the bridge gotta come first, as we've talked about. Vicky, quickly, are you working up like a 20-year debt exclusion?
No, I was just trying to figure out.
We're gonna have to go back up to there, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sitting here a little bit incredulous about this whole thing, so we actually were given a bid of $1 million to fix this bridge. We got a state grant of $1 million, and then they come back and say, I'm sorry, it'll be 2.6 million, so now we're in this bind of losing $1 million and bonding it ourself, and now who suggesting that we might wanna pay our own money and fix the bridge cosmetically? Who did you just say was willing, who asked them to wanna do that?
VHB or?
VHB, this is the company that wants to know?
It is a viable option, and there is a downside, because when I was talking to MassDOT, there is a bridge, and I forget, I think it's in Amherst. And the person was telling me, it's basically about the same size as our bridge. They just got the bids back for it, it was $6 million.
So, but they were suggesting that we might want to forego the $1 million from the state and bond money to repair the bridge cosmetically until it is no longer structurally sound?
I think what they were suggesting is that it gets to the point where it qualifies for tip, and so, yeah. Right now, it doesn't qualify for tip.
But the part I'm asking is, are we foregoing the $1 million and bonding the repair ourself? And what part is VHB going to play in this new plan? Were they suggesting that they be employed to structurally or cosmetically fix it?
No, I mean, it's, it's another option that they had brought up, actually, probably back in March or April. But as, as we're going forward, and they should have a new proposal to me and the estimates this week, it was one of the things that they brought back up again. It's, it's an alternative we didn't wanna go forward with spending a million and a half of our own dollars.
But wasn't it the last, where we left this topic, wasn't it, VHB was going to let us know if they could, what they could do to get to 10% or 25%? Wasn't that the last discussion we had about it?
That's what they're coming back with.
Right.
So now, is that still on the table?
Yes, it is, and I expect to get that from, then this week. I was trying to get it for today, but with the Thanksgiving holiday, they fell a little bit behind, so.
I just brought up the option of bonding the rest ourselves. Did you quickly figure out?
I wasn't sure. I was thinking, you know, if you did debt exclusion, wanna be on the top, but I wasn't sure about, I, I, Jen and I, I mean, Jen would be the one to do the borrowing, but I'd have no idea what that would be.
Okay, so I mean, it's, it's low interest, but.
Yeah.
Can't quickly in your head 20 years, million and a half, 4%? She's the accountant. So maybe we can look into that, see if there's any idea and get it back to us.
Quickly, quickly, it's, let's say.
You have to compound the interest, though, that's what I'm.
Well, that's the thing.
Well, forget, forget, forget the interest.
Your payments are gonna be twice a year, you're gonna have.
Yeah, it should be $75,000.
A year? With, with interest?
Not with, I'd be just doing the quick math without the interest, yeah. All part-wise.
For 20 years?
$90,000. So $90,000 a year, okay, okay, so it's, maybe you can check with Jen, just kind of a closer number, let us know.
That would be it.
Okay, so she'll get a number back to us, just so we have something to, to balance. I'm not suggesting we do it, but.
Well, wouldn't the townspeople decide that?
Oh, you have to go to town meeting and everything, but I'd, I'd like to have a number that we can discuss and say, is it worth putting forward for the town meeting or not? that we can discuss and say, is it worth putting forward for the town meeting or not? But until we have a number, you know, we're just kind of guessing here.
And the money from the state, the grant, is still available to us until the end of June?
End of June. So that's why we got to act on it.
And I got a quick question on that. So, let's say everything falls through, and we're going to give the grant back, could we redo the deck before we give the money back?
We could find out.
Yeah, so instead of giving the money back at the end of June, at least do the decking and the rails, and if it lasts another 10, 15 years before it goes to a level three, at least we get something out of it.
It's not for public input, it's just.
So this is just a point of conversation that'd be really important. Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street. So I'm currently working on a project that's related to a bridge that has failed. So if you do defer maintenance, if it's inspected, and if it's found to be failure deficient, MassDOT closes the bridge. So they put jersey barriers on either side, so the bridge becomes inaccessible and unusable. So just be mindful when you talk about possibly deferring maintenance or trying to get to the level three, because if funding isn't in place to act then, the bridge stays closed.
Until the funding.
Right, I'm on a project now.
Level three close a bridge?
I don't know the level, but the one I'm on, the bridge has been closed for almost four years, until the town could actually procure the funding. So the neighbor that lives here has to drive all the way around to get over here. It's few residents, much fewer than be impacted by.
It's also public safety.
That's the big deal, that's, that's great to know.
Just keep that in mind.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Should we know what level it takes to close a bridge?
I was just going to ask that, is a level three close it?
Or what closes a bridge?
Level three? What does that mean?
There's three different categories.
Of course, but which, and which level in each category closes the bridge, like if it's.
I can find out for you.
That may be something we want Randall to come here and, next meeting.
We need to find that out.
Yeah, we've got, we've got six months left on this grant, so.
I know, but.
Let's do something with it.
Yeah.
Okay, I want to go on to the next one, new business. Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School presentation. Michael Kaling, Chairman of the Board of Trustees. Dr. Andrew Lincoln Hooker, Superintendent, did I pronounce it right? Great, thanks. You able to come up and stand there, okay, or? Welcome.
Thank you.
If you need to sit, you're free.
My name is Michael T. Kaling, I'm Chairman of the Board of Trustees for Smith Vocational in Northampton. I want to thank you, the Select Board, to allow us to visit with you this evening and talk about your investment in our school by the young ladies and gentlemen that walk in on two feet every day, as well as what we're doing for the rest of 2018 and what's coming up in 2019. I have been a member of the Board of Trustees for seven years, and so I'll be coming up again, it's through two-year terms. So each year, we tried as the trustees to go out and listen to the towns that send us their students and see what we can do to help them in any way possible, and then give them a report so that they know what's going on. Because I know when the number comes across for vocational, a few people flinch, and I work on the political side with all our reps and senators and governors to try and get the message across to the state of what we require in order to do our job. But on the other side, that's exciting for me, because I graduated from the school as a collision repair technician in 1964. I've stayed involved in the school in advisory capacity up until one of our trustees retired in the city of Northampton, asked me to fulfill his term, and I did that, and then I had to run for office because it's an elected position. So I stand before you as an elected official. But the excitement for me to watch the growth, what has occurred in the school in that period of time, in regards to a lot of new classes that we've added in the administration that we have at the present time, is just outstanding. We are getting high marks everywhere in regards across the Commonwealth from other technical schools that see what we're doing. And so I'm very proud to stand before you tonight. What I'd like to do is hand it over to my Superintendent, let him walk you through the numbers, and then I'm up for questions, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Again, my name's Andy Lincoln Hooker. I live in a small town like Southampton, I live in Munson, so I understand the fiscal responsibilities that all of you have, and hopefully I can answer any questions that you may have. So I just want to highlight quickly what's in the folder that you have. There's a little brochure, like a trifold brochure, that highlights some of the programs that we have at Smithvoc, we hand this out to parents and community members and students. Another one-page document, I thought it'd be very beneficial for the Select Board to understand, who do we have from Southampton as far as students, and also as far as adults, employees that we have at Smithvoc that reside in the town of Southampton. So you'll see this year, we have nine freshmen that are enrolled. We do not have their, their program placements, because we have what's called an exploratory program, it's part of the regulations where students may know what they want to do when they grow up, we may know what we want to do when we grew up and were adults, but we know that sometimes that changes. So the regulations require students to explore various shops, so right now that is still going on. But you'll see, we have nine students, six of which are female, and we have three males from Southampton this year as freshmen. We have 14 sophomores, that's our biggest class as far as students coming from Southampton. Again, you'll see the programs that they're enrolled in and by gender, so it's very interesting information. All the way down to the bottom, that number of seven, seven adults working there, that has now changed. As of today, we have eight, we just hired a new cafeteria worker from Southampton, so. The one administrator is our principal, Joe Bianca, he lives here. We have four teachers from Southampton, my administrative assistant, Deb Carver, she lives in Southampton, and we have one substitute teacher as well. Okay, so that's that one page, I think it's always interesting to see who do you have from Southampton over at Smith, not only the students, but also the adults. So then, the presentation I have, I'll just quickly walk through this, a lot of this information you can read at night when you can't sleep, but I just want to identify who our trustees are, that's the first page, Mr. Kaling identified himself, and part of the governance structure that we have, we have three publicly elected officials who reside in the city of Northampton. That's part of the will that we have, that's Mr. Kaling, Mr. Fitzgerald, and Mr. Khan. And then we have two ex officio members as part of the governance model, so it's always the city of Northampton's mayor sits on our board, and the Northampton Public School Superintendent also sits on our board, and that's Dr. Provost. You'll see the, the school administration there on the next page, myself as the Superintendent, again, you can go through the typical administrative roles that any district has, we also have at Smithvoc, and any questions, by all means, you can reach out to any of them. Crystal Fairman, I'll just sort of drop her name, talking about tuitions, and when we send the bills out, it comes from Crystal's office as the Business Manager. So if there's any specific questions around tuition bills, obviously, reach out to myself or reach out to Crystal as the Director of Business. The next page is our mission statement, it's always nice to kind of understand what we're doing and why we're doing it, so if you have any questions, there's our mission statement. And we do have 15 vocational programs, the state of Massachusetts calls it, the regulations follow the chapter 74, so we call it chapter 74 programs, and you'll see the 15 that we have there, ranging from our agricultural programs to our typical trades programs, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, cabinet making, but we also have health assisting for students who want to become future healthcare workers. One of our newer programs is criminal justice, so I know you'll be looking for a new police chief relatively soon, we won't be quite ready that quickly for a new police chief, but in the future, we will definitely have, hopefully, future Southampton police officers coming from our criminal justice program, which is another great addition. Plumbing, I'm not sure if the plumber who helped put out the fire earlier this evening, but chances are, if you have a plumber in Western Mass, chances are he or she came from Smithvoc.
It turned out to be a mason, we found out.
I'm sorry, a mason, right then. We don't offer masonry, so it wasn't.
It's a great organization.
So not only do we offer the chapter 74 vocational programs, one thing that we do have, our scheduling model is a week on, week off, which means our students by grade, one week you're going to be in academics, so as an example, right now, our freshmen and our juniors are in their vocational programs, which means our sophomores and our seniors are taking their academic classes this week, and then next week they flip-flop, where the collaborative and some other half-day programs, that doesn't happen. So I think if you look at the research and best practices, what we provide is the best, where if you ask our vocational instructors, they can really get into in-depth projects because they have those students all day long for an entire week compared to a half-day model. And also, again, we offer a full range of academic programs, because what we're finding now is, a lot of students, they come to us because they want to get a trade, but they don't want to be a plumber for the next 30 years of their life. But what they're realizing is college is costing an arm and a leg, and how can they, how can they afford college? So what they want to do is they want to come to Smith, learn that trade, and allow that trade to pay their way through college. So you'll see here, our academic programs are beginning to sort of shift in that direction. You probably would never anticipate Smithvoc offering advanced placement classes, we're beginning to do that this year. We're offering AP English class this year, we're going to be offering AP Stats next year. We offer physics for the first time in school history, we offer what we call PLTW, that's a project leadway, it's an engineering science curriculum out of WPI that we bought into. And then we have our art classes, we have an art program for the first time in school history, a lot of our students want to pursue a fine arts future, and we're finding in the vocational shops, whether it's collision repairs, Mr. Kaling, if you have to paint a car, if you're in plumbing or carpentry and you have to design a space, in cosmetology and you have to understand hair color and makeup colors, the art program is very beneficial for a lot of students. And so, again, we offer English, Health, Math, Phys Ed, Science, Social Studies, and Spanish, this is a second year offering Spanish, not only because students want to go off to college and they want to have that foreign language background, but again, when you're talking about a lot of these vocational programs and working in the industry, having that Spanish background is second to none. So that police officer who has to interact with a Spanish-speaking individual is a great benefit, that hair salonist who's able to work with a client who speaks in Spanish is a great benefit. So, again, not only are we servicing the needs of our vocational programs, but also the academic programs. The historical enrollment, I just really want to highlight this, it definitely goes in cycles. Again, I live in a small town, our student enrollment has gone way, way, way down over the last few years, and I'm sure many towns in Western Mass are dealing with the same thing. So then, if that's the fact, then why is Smithvoc's enrollment keeps going up? And you'll notice that back in about 2013, 2014, every year, and I started in 2014, we've been gradually going up and going up and going up. We're now right around the 500 student mark, and this year, a slight dip back, and I would chalk that up as, again, the demographics in Western Mass, we have fewer students, and I'm sure as a Select Board you're finding maybe fewer residents in general, which is an issue for everybody. But again, overall, we're doing relatively well when it comes to student enrollment. One thing I want to highlight, and this is an issue that we have as a school and as the Superintendent when it comes to budgeting, is the percentage difference between our resident students and our non-resident students. And just to let you know, our so-called resident students would be the city of Northampton. So we don't have, we're not part of the city of Northampton per se, we're not part of the school district, but in the eyes of the Department of Ed, the Northampton students are our resident students. And everybody else is considered a non-resident student, which is why as the town of Southampton, you're paying a non-resident tuition bill per student. So the challenge, though, as a Superintendent, is only about 20 percent of our students come from the city of Northampton. When it comes to Perkins money, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Perkins Grant, Perkins is, goes to schools who offer chapter 74 programs. We only get Perkins money based on our Northampton students, so that's about $90,000 that we get for Perkins, and Perkins is really allocated for all of the equipment that we offer in the vocational programs, and equipment is very, very expensive. But we only have, we can only budget based on our Northampton students, we cannot budget, we don't receive Perkins money for Southampton students or anybody else. That money actually goes to the sending districts, so the town of Southampton receives that Perkins money, and when you talk to DESI, the argument is some of that Perkins money should be helping offset the tuition bill that you're then paying us. So just, we can talk about that offline if you have any questions about Perkins and whatnot. But the challenge that we have here at Smithvoc is, I have to then have to budget the non-resident tuition money to help improve and upgrade our equipment. When it comes to capital improvement and capital issues, when the roof leaks, and when the boiler breaks, and when the windows break, I, the only people I can go talk to is the city of Northampton. And sometimes it's difficult, because, and rightly so, the mayor will say, I only have 20 percent of the students there, and why am I paying 100 percent of the capital improvements? So what happens is, we have to, again, budget some of the tuition money coming in from Southampton and all the other non-resident towns, and set that aside as like that rainy day fund, when the roof does leak, and when the boiler does break, and when the windows break. So all that money, I have to sort of budget, just to keep that in the back of your mind. So we'll get to the tuition bill, but it is a challenge, you know, trying to balance that, that fine line between a small percentage of students coming from the city of Northampton and then a lot of, a lot of schools and a lot of towns that are very small and limited budgets, yet you're paying a high tuition bill. So there's the enrollment. Student demographics, just to let you know, again, yes, we do have more males and females, but it is quite close. Plans for after-high school, this is, we're always a year behind, so the class of 2017, you can see, the vast majority of our students do go into the workforce, and if you look at the research, when students graduate from a vocational school, where do they live? They basically end up living in the town they grew up in. So those future plumbers, those future electricians, the future police officers, the future cosmetologists, chances are they're going to come back to Southampton and provide a stronger economy for all of you. Students who go off to college, oftentimes, they hunt for the jobs. So you may have a student who lives in Southampton, goes off to college, and that individual will never come back to the town of Southampton. Oftentimes, that does happen, though, from the vocational perspective. Next page is post-secondary, I won't list all of them, but you'll see the wide range of community colleges that our students get into, the wide range of four-year public schools, and even four-year private schools that our students are getting into. So again, you know, that montage of 20, 30, 40 years ago of those students would go to Smithvoc, well, we get all students that come to Smithvoc now, and we have to service all of those students, so. And then, most likely, the figure that you want to see is the non-resident tuition rate. Again, I just want to preface that, the school does not set the non-resident tuition rate, that comes from DESI. And unfortunately, as we all know, in, at the state level, sometimes that doesn't come out until the 12th hour. So I know as a town, you're trying to build your town budgets, as a school, we're trying to build a school budget, and I don't receive that non-resident tuition rate until March, sometimes even April, which is really, really late. So that's the challenge, it's always a moving target. You'll see over the last few years, at the state level, they've been decreasing the tuition rate over the last few years, which is a good thing for a town, obviously, it makes our budget a little bit more difficult. You'll see this current fiscal year, it did bump up, though, you did see it increase in the tuition rate.
500 bucks.
Okay, so it's, okay? Just to show you where that, that figure comes from.
What is the resident?
It's about $17,200, I think it was, this year.
So there's not much difference?
No.
Okay. So about $750 from last year?
Looks like 500, or?
Yeah, it's 500, it's 500.
Yeah, just from reading the graph, it looks like.
The other piece, obviously, the burden that sending districts have would be the cost of transportation, so that's not included here, and I know those must be discussions at the town level, so I do understand that, that issue as well. But as, as you know, you're part of a regional district, even if you weren't, there is, if there's money out there, they always promise money for transportation reimbursement at the state level, if that ever happens, but you are able to apply for reimbursement for the Smith students as well, okay? A five-year budget comparison, I just, again, give you some historical perspective, where the budget has been over the last few years. This current school year was my first full year developing the budget and getting the budget approved, we had a 3 percent increase. Again, trying to understand and recognize that, for us to keep asking money from the city of Northampton, and how do we make the money work from these sending districts? Just another point of reference, I know our adult ed program is becoming very, very successful, I'm not sure if you've seen it in the media, and maybe some of you have taken classes through our adult ed programs.
Or tried to take classes.
Tried to take classes.
It fills up very quickly.
So one of my priorities is, that is a self-sufficient program. I have made it known to the Board of Trustees that we will not, we will not take a penny from the non-resident tuition money that comes to us from you to educate our day students, we won't use that money to educate the adult evening programs. So all of that money is generated through, you know, the tuition that we charge in the evenings, so definitely separate programs.
I've got to say, if administration is only 7 percent, that's very good.
Tell that to my boss, maybe give me a pay raise, but no. But again, our priority is instruction, and I think it's easier, to be, to be honest, as a vocational school, a lot of that is equipment. So we have an advanced manufacturing program, and one new mill is going to cost us $150,000 at a minimum, if not over $200,000 for one piece of equipment. And if you walk into that shop, we have close to a million dollars worth of equipment in that one particular program. So it costs a lot to educate the students when it comes to vocational ed. And again, the last page is my contact and Crystal's contact. Any comments or questions? I know it's difficult. I know it's difficult, you have a difficult position to be in. I did reach out, just to let you know, Aaron Osborne knows, he's the superintendent of Hampshire Regional. I reached out to him, let him know that we're going to be here this evening. He has all of this information as well, so he's definitely on the same page.
Personally, I've only heard good things about the school. And I know we have a parent of a child that goes to the school here, and she is always saying good things about the school, too, so.
If you need a plumber, again, Skills USA is an international program and competition. Where students in their industry programs, they compete. At the district level, it's a paper-and-pencil test. At the state level, it's a practical test. And if you win the state level, they move on to a national level. And if they win that, they go on to an international level. The last two international representatives for the entire country in plumbing are Smith students. So, like I'm saying, we are doing some great things at Smith.
I got a question, a couple weeks ago, and I directed him to the school, but you can answer it. There was a young gentleman who was his mid-20s, out of school. He wanted to go back for trade. He asked if he could go to Smith Vocational. I didn't have an idea, so I directed him. Can somebody go back there?
Yes. So the adult ed program that we have, we were just, we're one of 13 programs in the state approved for a post-secondary Chapter 74 program in advanced manufacturing. Governor Baker really values the importance of manufacturing in the state, which is why we're getting a lot of money for our day program, but also why we were approved for the night program.
So just manufacturing?
Manufacturing, and electrical is another one as well. So we're offering electrical and plumbing in the evening.
That's in the evening?
In the evening.
Okay, so they contacted the school and?
Exactly.
Okay, great, thanks.
Two questions. One is, I know the timing is always really challenging because we budget blindly for the number of students we anticipate will go to Smith-Vogue. And then, if it's a lot more, it's a, you know, it's a pretty large amount. Can you update me on, maybe with Vicki here also, exactly what the timing is? And is there anything that can be done to make it tighter?
So the timing is, we had an open house, two weeks ago, beginning of November, we had an open house. That was really our first exposure to get middle-school students on campus to decide if they want to apply or not. We've opened up applications at that point. So now, students are applying to Smith now through February, March. The deadline for myself and Aaron Osborne to sign off on that non-resident tuition form, the regulations state April 1st is the deadline. So we have hopefully given responses to the students to say you've been accepted or not by March. But then, we know by a signed tuition form, April 1st is the deadline. So by April 1st, you would know who has been technically signed off on. The challenge, what happens, is what happens if a student decides, "Oh, I want to go to Smith", and now we're talking May, June, July, August. In the past, before my administration, what would happen is a student would be reviewed, accepted, and that puts an undue pressure on the superintendent, Aaron Osborne, and you as a town to say, "Okay, the school has accepted this child. Why are you going to be the bad people to say, 'No, we're not going to pay that bill'?" So what happens now is, if a student comes to us over the summer, as an example, to say, "I want to come to Smith", our first thing is, you need to go talk to the superintendent. So then there's a conversation at the superintendent level, who obviously has to get the blessing from the town to make sure you pay for it. So that's, April 1st, to answer your question, April 1st is that deadline. You should have a hard number of accepted and signs off on the tuition. After April 1st, it's a case-by-case where the superintendent would have to sign off on it.
So they have the authority or ability to sign off on anybody after April 1st?
Now, typically, most superintendents understand that that additional tuition bill would have to go to a special-town meeting. So I would assume that the superintendents would be talking to finance committees and select boards to say, "I have a student I want to accept. It's after the April 1st deadline. What do we want to do as a town?" And I know towns do that. And then, you know, there's town meetings, special-town meetings where you're talking about a particular student. But that's the fact of life. April 1st is the deadline.
My second question is, you know, one of the concerns that I've had about public education is, we have a school committee that makes recommendations and is elected by each town to make recommendations around curriculum, budget, and all of that. And it just seems that our taxpayers don't have a say about the money going out to pay for vocational education. So what do you do to actually elicit feedback from parents particularly, or townspeople around the administration of your school?
Correct. So we have a, we call it the Board of Trustees. It would be a school committee. So we have that same governance. So anybody in the public would have the opportunity to go to a Board of Trustees meeting and voice their concerns around curriculum. We also have a school council, which is a state regulation. All schools have to have a school council, which has parents sitting on that school council. So as a former principal there, I made sure I had at least two parents. And we talked about educational issues, curriculum issues. And that school council would create the school improvement plan, which then has to be approved by a school committee or our Board of Trustees. And as a superintendent, I have to make sure that we're following that school improvement plan. So it'd be those two avenues. It would be the voice at the school committee or our Board of Trustees, or getting involved in school council.
Any other?
Yeah, I have a, just a quick question. Roughly, we have currently 41 people going there. When we have children apply to go to the school, are we normally 100% acceptance, or?
Great question.
Or what is our ratio been? Have we had like 30 people and only take nine, or?
And I can't speak specifically on the town of Southampton, but we're, we're accepting in the 70% to 80% of our students. So what we're looking at, there's a rubric that has to be approved at the state level. We've actually changed, we're actually, we're asking to change it, we're to eliminate the interview. A lot of students, as you can imagine, as a little eighth grader, they might be a little timid. They might be an introvert. And we don't want to harm their ability to get into Smith because they don't provide a good interview. There's alternative ways to deal with the interview. But we look at grades, we look at attendance, we look at discipline, and we look at a guidance counselor recommendation. And there's a strict rubric, there's points based on every A and every B and every absence that you have and every day of suspension that you have. It goes into an equation, a student gets a point value. And because of that residency discussion we had, we have to look at the city of Northampton students first. But by all means, they do not fill all of the slots. So we have to look at them first, which goes back to your question around the timing. I have to see what we have for Northampton students first. And then we have, again, 80% of our seats then go out to everybody else. Then we look at all of our Hampshire Regional and Amherst and so on and so forth.
Do you run at full capacity every year?
My, I think, my vision, full capacity, would be 550 students, nine through 12. Pushing 500. So we're getting there.
So, but you have room, so if you get the qualified students, you could put them in?
Correct.
Okay. You do run a good program.
So one issue for us is, we have, like a college, we accept a lot of students, knowing full well that although those accepted students will choose to come to Smith, which is always a challenge. And back to the town of Southampton, so we may approve, we may accept a student, the superintendent signs off, but we don't know if that student's ever going to show up until August, which impacts your budget.
Yeah.
That's another challenge.
Anything else?
We currently have one student who's going to Westfield Vocational because of the, because the program isn't currently offered at Smith. Is that, is that very a rare circumstance?
Yes.
The AMP mechanic.
I hesitate because the state changed the regulations relative, about the last four or five years, where before the regulation change, the town of Southampton, you could send a student to any vocational school you wanted to, based on the programs offered. And a lot of towns have declared schools as a school of preference to say, "We're going to send all of our students to Smith, or all of our students to this other particular program." Unless they don't offer the program, then we'll send a student elsewhere. They've changed the regulations now where if a town has declared, or a school committee actually, declares a school of preference, all of the students have to explore at that school of preference, no matter what. And that has actually hurt us. There's been some towns in the past, normally would send all of their students to the collaborative. Some of their students would come to us for programs that we offer that the collaborative does not offer. Now, unfortunately, those students now have to go and explore at the collaborative freshman year and decide that, "I still don't want to be here, I still want to be at Smith", and apply to Smith as a sophomore, hoping that we have an opening in that particular program sophomore year. And it's more transitions, as you can imagine, as an eighth grader, freshman, sophomore in high school, going from school to school to school. So I have an issue around that, obviously. But it's not common, but it does happen.
So that changed a few years ago? Because that used, Smith is our school of choice, and unless there's something that they don't, you don't have, they can't go to another one.
Correct.
So now we can say, "You've got to explore at Smith for a year."
If you've, I'm not sure if the school committee actually did declare us a school of preference. If that's the case, and a lot of communities are finding back the transportation cost, which is really the big cost.
Yeah.
If you're sending students to different schools, there's a bus here and a bus there, and they're finding that, "Let's just send all the students to one school and save money on the transportation." So that's happening in the region.
Okay, that's good information. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good seeing you.
Just wanted to mention, if I could, that... We're working with Hoya Community College on our campus. We brought back the LPN program, Licensed Practical Nursing. And what we do is, we have an agreement with Hoya Community College where we lease them the space, and they actually run the program. And then they went into an agreement with Westfield State University, where a man or lady wants to go in and do an R-N program, they're automatically accepted right out of the LPN program at Smith. So it's, it's very advantageous for the health field. And we're collegiate, it's in hospital right next door to us. They, we have a very strong working relationship with that. The other thing is our agricultural side. We have an articulation agreement with the University of Massachusetts at Stockbridge, where our students go through our program. And if they want to go on a further education at UMass, we have an agreement that they can go into that system. So it's an exciting time for the students, for the parents. And the nice thing, what Andy talked about, was we just had an open house in the amount of parents that showed up with their students. The bad blood years ago, where if a kid wasn't too bright, they sent him to VOTech. That's not the way anymore. And the students' parents came in. And it wasn't the old days where, you know, they get up into a mother's lap, said, "I want to be a body man." Didn't happen. Today, it happens. They come and they look at the cleanliness of the departments and what little Johnny or Mary is going to be entering into. And they know it's health, healthy, safe environment, and we're providing it.
That's great. Yeah, it has the reputation, it just turned, you know, 360. Thanks. Thanks for both coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So let me elaborate a little bit on how we do our budget. So we get a list of all the accepted students from Hampshire Regional. And we base our budget based on those accepted students. We look at the trend of what was accepted versus actually what was enrolled when we get those final numbers, and kind of make a judgment call on the trend of how many students didn't necessarily go to Smith that were accepted. And we kind of build our budget that way with one or two students, you know, as the superintendent said before, that may come up, you know, during the summer. So there's a little bit of money set aside, so to speak, for those students. Because we can only go on past practice in the history of what students didn't get, didn't decide to go if they've been accepted. So that's kind of how we have been, you know, kind of going forward with that, so.
Yeah, a little guessing.
Because we know we need that, you know, March, February, March time. But if we have that accepted list, you know, and you can cut that back a little bit, knowing a few students might not go, so.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thanks for the explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on. Now we're going to have quarterly updates from various committee boards and commissions. First up, planning, Paul Deman. I believe you're giving your report. Welcome.
Good evening, all.
Hi.
Thank you for inviting me. And before I start, I'd like to thank the members of our board, Paul Fergal and Keith Lock, who are both engineers. Cindy Palmer, who was just recently elected a few months ago, is a new addition. Of course, Jim LeBree, a valuable member of our ward. And thank you for having me. As we go forward, we're up against a marijuana bylaw that we're planning on hearing December 5th in this room. We passed the moratorium, the town voted it that they would like marijuana in the town of Southampton about two years ago, maybe a little bit more than two years ago. So we've taken the steps to bring the bylaw to fruition. We worked on it in the spring. There's been a moratorium so we could work out the kinks in the bylaw with the assistance of Larry Smith from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And we finally have a draft, and it's coming to the table on December 5th for all those interested. And hopefully, we can pass that so we can get it to the next town meeting for approval or revise it. Some of the other projects we've been working on recently, the Glendale Road property, which everyone is familiar with, that the planning board sent the recommendation to have the town look into purchasing it for open space. That was a first in my term on the board. It was good to see. A beautiful piece of property that could have been developed is now going to remain in town hands for conservation and recreational purposes. A similar property might be on the offing in the future. Is it the, is it Kanopka or?
Yep.
Pomeroy Meadow Road?
Yep.
Is that?
It's the water recharge area.
We sent a approval for Kurt Ojolai, who came to our meeting recently, seeking protection for that parcel, I believe for aqua, for reasons.
Recharge, yeah.
So that'll be interesting to watch. We have a, we have a big, a very big megawatt. I'm not quite sure how many, but it's probably going to be the largest in this town. And it makes me think of the one that West Hampton has just approved. That's coming before, it's probably early next year, on the Pleasant Street, Beschista property. Huge solar project, which the company came to us for informational meeting a few weeks ago. They're very professional, and I'm sure everybody will be interested in how that will come to fruition on Pleasant Street area. Road acceptance, Quigley Road, which is Pellegrini Estates, off a crooked-ledged road, will be, we're waiting for inspections by Highway and our board, which will make a site visit so we can determine if the subdivision has been designed and the roadway properly with the assistance of Randall Kemp. And that being the case, if it meets all the criteria, that could be on the town warrant for your next town meeting. The, one of the biggest projects we've had for development in recent months is the Christ Community Church of Hampshire County, which is building a church up on College Highway toward the Westfield Line, Corner Valley Road. There's a lot of work to be done on that. There was a lot of disturbance. We had to make sure that the drainage and the conservation needs were met. And they did so. And we welcomed them to town. It's probably not going to be constructed, probably they've got a year and a half or two years out before they'll open their doors. And that is pretty much it. I'd like the select board to consider, or even the town administrator, or however you might put a feeler out, we'd like to have one or two alternates on our board. I'm not quite sure what the law allows for our size board, whether it's one or two. But we'd like to have a couple of alternates on the planning board in the event that we have absences or illness or someone may resign unexpectedly. But if we have alternates, we can then be assured to have a full board to meet some of the permits that come before us. And our longest work project is the total revision of the bylaws, which is one of the charges that we were given through the master plan. We're probably a third way through it. The marijuana bylaw will be separate from that because it will be voted and approved on well before the, all of the rest of them are done. I'm hoping by the spring town meeting, we may have sections ready to come before you because it's such a big project, and there's so many sections, that we can only bring so many to the table at one time and vote on them kind of separately. Because if you bring it as a... it as a package and town meeting votes it down, then we've got to start the process kind of all over again. So, we're probably going to bring it in sections and refine it at the town meeting so we can move ahead on some if we have to adjust others, but so the entire package is not, sets us backwards. But other than that, we approve our fair share of building permits and he and ours, pretty routine business.
Business is good.
Fair. It's going to slow up now with the winter, but that'll give us more time to work on bylaws.
Any questions for Mr. Deven?
So, Paul, your bylaws allow you to assign alternate members? Is that, do you know?
We have the, we have the opportunity for, I believe it's an appointment by the select board. It's not an elective position, it's an appointment, I'm pretty sure.
Ed could look into that, but if there's anybody interested in serving, they could give Ed a call. Hopefully, people out there hearing you have an interest.
No.
We'll see.
And you never know, you know, we have five-year terms and as time goes on, some people renew and seek reelection, others do not. So, if there's alternates, it could be a natural progression where they would just continue on.
It's always an interesting board to listen to, so.
Always all of that.
Yeah, I think it's a good way for succession planning.
But you don't have to be an engineer.
A few committees who are in this situation of not necessarily always having a quorum or having full membership and something like this, really to be able to backfill those vacancies would be, I think, keep us moving instead of, you know, stopping what we're doing while we're recruiting new members, you know.
I think, like you said, it gauges interest. If you like it, you can run.
It is. Two of our board members are engineers. Cindy Palmer and I are just your average layperson that are business people. And of course, Jim is invaluable because he's a lifelong resident here that knows every road and every parcel of land, which has a lot of history to go to it, which is also very important to know when we're discussing different properties, so.
Good variety. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Paul. We have the ZBA on here, but they requested to come at a later date, so we're going to pass over. Housing Authority, Jenica Reynolds, I believe. How are you?
Hi, good, thank you. I'm Jenica Reynolds. I've been on the Housing Authority for, I think, six years, eight years. It's been a while. We have been, the Housing Authority has not been doing much. We have three members currently. We don't have a chair. We haven't had a chair for over a year and a half. We're supposed to have five members. We don't. We, I am going to be most likely finishing my commitment to the Housing Authority in May and I have two newer members who I'm trying to pass on as much information to as I can. And basically, that is consisting of, the information I'm passing along is what we've tried and hasn't worked. Because you may have noticed, there is no more affordable housing in Southampton now than there was 10 years ago. The only thing that we have done is pass the inclusionary zoning bylaw with the help of the planning board. I am actually coming to the meeting on the 5th of December to discuss maybe a possibility that we hadn't thought of before. Another avenue to pursue, using perhaps smaller lots that we have set aside for the inclusionary zoning, using that for just one affordable house rather than needing to hit the 10, needing to have a development and then trigger the inclusionary zoning bylaw. If you could, if you could trigger that and the benefits of that with just one affordable house, so.
Need a development with 10 or more houses, right?
Currently, in order to, in order to trigger the inclusionary zoning bylaw, which means at that point, you have to include affordable housing. That number is 10. But our question is, does it actually have to be triggered by the 10 or can you go in with an offer of like, okay, well, I have five houses and I'd like them, one of them to be affordable. Well, if it could be that, could it just be one house on an odd-sized lot? Because the benefit of using, using the inclusionary zoning is that you can have an up to 20% reduction in street frontage and the size lots for the area in which they're zoned. So, we're going to look into that and see if that's a possibility. We did, last night, we actually met with three builders who work in Southampton and then some other members of, Virginia was there and Tom Quinnland was there and just other people to try to talk about. And then Bob Cannon was there also to talk about what affordable housing could look like, what we need. It was a, it was a very good discussion. We'll see what comes of that. But we need, we could use more people and I think that part of the problem why people haven't been interested in joining is that our hands are very tied by the rules of community preservation and how we can spend the community preservation money. We're not alone in that. Lots of small towns are also struggling to spend money. The way that most towns spend the community preservation affordable housing money is on houses that they already, affordable housing that they already own, so for upkeep for that. Or if a, if an apartment building is for sale, they can use community preservation money to buy that, to put into the town stock of affordable housing. But it's very hard to, it's very hard to spend the money that community preservation has if you don't have a paid staff, if you don't have affordable housing already existing in your town. You're quite limited.
We don't have many apartment buildings in town.
No, no.
Okay. So, you need two more members because if you are leaving in May, you're going to have two brand-new members learning everything, so the more you can get on board now, the better it is.
Exactly.
So, if anybody's interested, you meet once a month?
No, we don't even meet once a month because we haven't had anything to meet for.
Okay, so it's not a time.
It's not a time commitment, no. But we do have a representative on master planning, we do have a representative on community preservation. So, those are, those actually have taken more time than the housing in the last, like, four years, I would say, those commitments.
So, if we have people out there that are interested, again, we can see Ed on that and express their interest, that would be nice.
That would be great.
Yeah. Any questions?
Janine had said that one of the members of the Housing Authority is supposed to be a state-appointed.
Correct.
Member. So, are any of the members of the Housing Committee currently state-appointed?
No.
So, I wonder if any of them are willing to be.
No.
No, okay. I think you're downplaying a little bit of the work of the committee because I, from what I understand, there's been a lot of work of this particular committee.
Yes.
Looking into Habitat for Humanity, looking into a lot of possibilities because community preservation reserves money in the housing account and then it's very hard to spend it.
Exactly.
So, I know that when I joined up with the committee for a little bit, we discussed how important it would be for affordable housing for seniors to actually stay in Southampton.
Yes.
And that that might be an avenue to team up with Council of Aging or seniors to try to come up with a way to support seniors staying in this town. And I know West Hampton Woods has a development and we had contacted them to find out about their funding and they got a lot of Hilltown development funds for that. But I had asked a lot of questions about sewer and things like that. So, anyway, I hope people are interested in working on this because particularly in the avenue of young families in town that may grow up in this town that want to stay here, it's not always very affordable of a town to actually stay in your own town. And a lot of people do want to do that.
Right.
And for seniors too. So, anyway, I hope there are people that are interested.
Well, after our meeting last night, I learned that the builders really are interested too. It's not that, I had sort of been thinking that if they built more expensive houses then they could get more money. I was just thinking, well, you know, the more they can sell a house for them, the more money they make. And yes, there is some truth to that, but they're not not interested in building affordable housing. It's kind of like the land costs are very high, so.
Right.
If you have a lot of this size and you had to pay that much for it, to get your money out of it, you have to put a bigger house on it. And we also discussed renovations and the problem with renovations is the community preservation money can only be used on houses that are deed restricted for the town. And so, if the town, if the person who lives in the house may very well qualify for affordable housing because the limits are not that low. For a family of four, it's, I think, like $88,000 of income. So, it's not, it's, plenty of people in the town would qualify for affordable housing. The values of plenty of people's homes are affordable and would, would be available for the deed restriction, but the deed restriction would mean that they would have to, there'd be a lot of real estate transactions in order to get their deed restriction put on the house and then there would be restrictions on selling their house. And so, that's not encouraging for people to jump into that.
Is there any way that community preservation funds for affordable housing could be used to offset maybe some of the land costs that a developer would want to buy?
Absolutely, yes. So, that's, yeah, we have over three, we have like $308,000 right now with more coming in because 10% of community preservation money each year gets put into the housing account. So, we were talking to builders about like where, how much, how much of the gap is there? And it's a big gap. Maybe not as.
It's the entire cost of the lot.
Yeah.
Which throws it out of whack.
Right. And so, we have, as Rini said, we, it's not like we haven't done anything. We've done, we have looked into all the town-owned properties to see if any of those are buildable and Habitat for Humanity is ready and waiting to help out if we do find a lot. They absolutely would, you know, they would like to help us, they would like to see that happen, but we don't have buildable lots, although we may. Turns out, we may if we can.
Right.
Shrink the lot size just a little bit.
Well, on the planning board, I've seen parcels go by that we couldn't approve, they don't have the right frontage, so it's basically just backland, vacant land. That's why the question came up. If we invoke the exclusionary zoning and allow to reduce the frontage on one lot by 20%, that lot now may be able to house a house for affordable housing. So, we may have a few vacant lots like that we could use to try to get to that point. And the other issue that we were talking about last night is the 308,000 that's in CPC. Bob Cannon was there and I said, "How many houses in Southampton sold for less than 250,000?" And it was like around 20, I think, is what he told me. So, they could use that money to purchase a house, but by the time the house goes under market, it's gone, it takes a lot of work to put the offer in, accept it, then it's got to go to town meeting. So, we can't have quick access to that money, which makes it very difficult for them as well. So, those are a lot of the issues that we were talking about last night.
Do you guys have any questions?
Wish we had some answers.
Money's sitting there, but it's.
Yeah.
We don't have the administration in place to transfer it into, what'd you say?
It's a housing trust is, is one option that towns use so that they can, so that you can vote at town meeting to have community preservation money for housing put into a housing trust. But there are a lot of guidelines, one of which is that you need to have five members on that board with two-year appointments. And since we can't even get people onto the Housing Authority, I think it would be particularly difficult to get people on that board and then keep, keep, keep that happening. It's just a small town, smaller town and people are busy and people are involved.
Yeah, life gets in the way.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Anything for Ms. Reynolds? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's see now, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Mike Rosenberg. Hi, Mike.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So, we have been meeting about every other week. We just had another member appointed this evening, which is great. All in all, we've had relatively good attendance. Each member has an area of responsibility, so if you come from a certain committee, we've kind of delegated you to be responsible for kind of that part of the master plan, the status, how's your committee doing, the pitfalls, the troubles, the successes, kind of the report I'll measure. The at-large members have the non-represented committee board, so agricultural committee, select board, highway, you know, building, Board of Health, those types of departments, COA, the groups that aren't necessarily represented by members, so we've split that So, to date, we have reviewed Chapters One and Two. Demographics and Housing for Chapter One, Economic Development for Chapter Two. So, we're going chapter by chapter, discussing, discussing the report, discussing what we read, successes and obstacles. So, we do have a list of what has been accomplished since then, but we felt it important to basically read the whole master plan because it's eight years old. And outside of the things that have been accomplished, it probably hasn't been looked at in six and a half. You know, some groups, I think, look at it, but as a whole, really understanding the goals, I don't think anyone's really gone cover to cover. So, we're trudging our way through, taking notes. Concurrently, we have a member compiling, you could call it a rubric or a list of all the goals that are in the master plan so that we can kind of visually see where we are, what's been completed, what's in progress, what may be a stretch, right, and what may be sort of a tabled goal. You know, in our opinion, this one may not be reachable so that when we do go through everything, compile all the data, we present you something that is sort of easy to process visually, right, because it's 250 pages in that report, so. I mean, it'd be difficult to go page by page with everyone. So, if we can get it down to some sort of Excel spreadsheet, color-coded would be good. Let's see. So, once fully reviewed and sort of gone over, status, we'd like to bring it back to the select board as, this is what we've accomplished, right? These are the greens, the yellows, the reds, or whatever we use to delineate what we've done. One thing we have found in the discussions is that the plan itself, the language in the plan almost sort of, in some instances, contradicts some of the survey results and then it makes some of the goals a little contradictory, you know. We have survey results that say we want to be more like, more like Huntington, Granby and West Hampton than East Hampton, right? But then we have goals that are driving towards East Hampton and Hadley, those other communities, so, you know, where do we really want to be as a town? So, we have discussed, so we have survey results. We have one from 2010, we have another set of survey results, we just received more copies of former survey results.
Former, yes.
Yeah, so we have a list of results from the last 15 years. We'd like to propose a, a new survey at some point. So, once we compile everything, having some sort of survey outreach to reassess where the town is, where the residents feel they are, you know, we had a survey with, let's say, I'm going to say 1,500 respondents, I think that Barbara had given us. Then we had another survey for this that only had 300. So, your, your sample size is differing. And then if you read the results, there's lots of questions where there were a lot of words and people didn't, people skipped that one, basically, right? I mean, if, if there's 18 options, you're going to go to the next one with the yes or the no box. So, you know, trying to reestablish what the residents feel the goal should be around some of these. Let's see. Yeah, so, I mean, once we compile everything, we get ourselves heading in some sort of survey direction, you know. We discussed some sort of mailer, some sort of postage-related thing, but we also discussed, you know, like a Survey Monkey app or something you can go online and do to make it available for everyone, right, to reach more, because you want more people. And to be honest, I'd rather have the survey results on the computer tell me the results than have 2,000 pieces of paper to tally, right? So, the more we can gather that automatically does the work for us would be helpful. Couple other notes here, just statistic-wise, and if, if you have the master plan, I would recommend skipping about 200 pages. There's, there's some survey results that are in the back that are pretty good. There's also some, some like locust maps, some little traffic studies, some different, some different informational pieces kind of can get you thinking about the master plan. There's plenty of good information in the chapters, but, you know, for an overview, I think a lot of the, the good stuff is in the appendices. Couple notes, so in just reviewing the first couple of chapters, you know, there was definitely emphasis on the survey results that the town likes the historic village center the way it is, right? So, from Town Hall to, let's say, the library, that area. 80% like it the way it is, but then we also have goals and recommendations to pursue development, to pursue, pursue doing other things in those areas. So, I think refining what they like and what we, you know, what you like and then trying to go from there, right? You don't want to build a four-story condo complex there, but how do you do development in that area going forward? How do you possibly reuse the police station? How do you reuse the space next to the police station, the parking lot? You know, it ties into other. You know, it ties into other developments. They talk about walking trails along E Street, right? Which leads you to sidewalks, which leads you to future construction projects down the road. One quote I thought really interesting, and it's just a little five-word, six-word blurb. So, they described it as a snapshot at a point in history, and I think that's important because it was, it was eight years ago. So, the reassessment, I think, is good because that snapshot is obviously going to change, opinions may have changed, we may be leaning in other directions, those types of things. You know, good, there's good pieces in there as also, like, they talk about re-engaging the Greater East Hampton Chamber of Commerce for promotion of businesses, right? Maybe a part of that, I'm not sure, no. So they have thirty, it was twenty-seven businesses, thirty businesses in the town, whatever it was, that are a part of that Chamber of Commerce, but, you know, being involved in the town, I've never heard them come up. As like a, you know, commercial industrial promoter of business in town. We are a member of that. Other community, or other businesses in town are a member, and, you know, leveraging some of those things that we're a part of, we just may not know, right? So, you know, the plan talks about creating a destination community, whether it be walking destination or driving destination in East Hampton. Are we leveraging what we're participating in now to make that happen, right? Are we promoting the town through brochures, through whatever the means may be at the Chamber of Commerce? Let's see. And then another thing we did talk about was demographic statistics. You know, population of the town, you know, it's, this is, their information was based off maybe a two thousand and ten census, whatever it was. Obviously, numbers have changed, demographics have changed, so. But, yeah, we've, we've gone through two chapters. We're going to meet the beginning of December, and then we'll probably take a break till January. And just keep trudging along, taking notes, having discussions, you know, we, we've reached out to our departments. You know, we have little feedback from the, I shouldn't say, we, we've had some feedback from certain departments that we've reached out to, and, you know, we take notes, and when we're able to compile it all and present it, I think that's the, that's when you really see where we are and, you know, where we need to go with some of those. That's basically all I had. Are there any questions? I might have a. Any questions from the board?
Any questions?
I have, have you reached out to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for any assistance?
That's my one highlighted question was PVPC funding or assistance, because, you know, we can do the assessment, and I think it's good to do the assessment, but some of the, you know, the, the realigning, what we're trying to do, the survey, a lot of those things would be important. You know, a lot of these goals are probably still applicable, but their priority may have changed based on new survey results and direction. So, we have not yet.
Well, I, I did, I did call and talk with Susan Westa about whether or not anyone was still on the PVPC who participated in this original master plan development. Everyone is gone. But, um, they would be interested in supporting us, obviously, for a fee. We didn't go there. But we'd have to define for them very clearly what our project was, and we're not there yet. The reason we're really taking time, it's not like we're slow readers, that we do a, a chapter a month, but you're looking at ten people, looking at the same information, and trying to have a conversation to make sure that we all understand the information the same way, and that we're all on the same page. It's not, like I said, we're not dragging our feet, it's really to make sure that we have a very common understanding of what, what the document is saying to us, and where we think we want to go with it.
Well, um, two parts, yes, their assistance would be great, and for a fee, whatever that is. But, a grant, could they help you apply for a grant somewhere, so that could get in motion while you guys are compiling your information?
I think what she said to me is we would have to define the project so that they could find the funding. But yes, that they would be, that they would be the, the driver of the, the grant-making process for us.
Right. I think once, once the, you know, we talk about the, the rubric, the document, whatever it ends up being, I think, once that starts, you know, becoming a tangible thing that we can look at and really see where we are, then you can kind of define the direction to go, because it also, you know, we're going to review this and, and kind of, we're a diverse group, right? Everyone's going to have their own opinion. What we want from PVPC is also going to be determined by what the select board would like to see as well, right? So, if we present you with a plan and you say this doesn't really align with what we thought the master plan was, you may have a different suggestion for how PVC moves forward, what we try to look at, so.
That's good to see the committees back together, taking interest.
Yeah, it's, it's been good, and I think we've, there are lots of committees that are working on this, you know, the, the housing, right? So, she talked about things today that we talked about two weeks ago, right? Things that are ongoing, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, like, they're all working on lots of parts and pieces of this. It's just gathering that information and then, you know, assessing where we are.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Hey, we're two hours in. Is everybody having fun? Long agenda. Okay, Jerry Pocat, I know he was here.
Uh, he was right outside the door there a second ago.
Okay, so we'll just pass over quickly until he pops back in. Town clerk temporary appointment, uh, everybody knows Janine Domina is leaving, retiring, uh, December seventh, is that right? When is she, her last day?
December third is her official last day on our books. I believe this Thursday, the twenty-ninth, is her physical last day here.
Okay, good. So, before we go into that, come on up, Jerry. We called you when you were out there, but since you walked in, let's, you've been waiting a while.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just introduce yourself and.
My name is Jerry Pocat, I'm a Veteran Services Officer for the town. So basically, I, I just wanted to be put on the agenda just to discuss, um, the option of having a, an article added to the next, if, if we have a special town meeting. Basically, it's to adopt the clause under, um, chapter fifty-nine, Assessment of Local Taxes. Section five, as you may know, is property exemptions. Clause twenty-two, there's six parts. It basically entails veterans. Exemptions for veterans, all different, uh, aspects of reasons why they would get a exemption, a decrease in their property taxes. So in particular, I'm looking at clause twenty-two D, Real Estate to the Full Amount of Property Taxes Surviving Spouses of Veterans. And that is, uh, it's in effect, it's been some time now that the state mandates that it's, it's the widow or widower would have to be in the state, residing in the state of Massachusetts for a minimum of five years, and it's been some time now. They just passed, um, the fact that it'll be reduced from five years to two years. So essentially, it's two years now, which is great.
Start, that's July one of twenty nineteen, correct?
Correct, correct. So, under the, uh, the, the DLS, Department of Revenue, and this is, um, pretty much an abstract of the law, but this, you can get outside the assessor's office, they, they have copies. It's, this is, states, um, under clause twenty-two D, the full exemption, um, basically, surviving spouse who have never remarried, that, um, that were, that had been married to a, a veteran, military personnel, including members of the National Guard, active duty, who were missing action or, or have died in combat, or have died due to a, um, a service connection, connected disability, that they'll get the full exemption. Surviving, and I quote from the, um, the DLS here, a surviving spouse must have lived in Massachusetts for at least five years, now two. So essentially, it's two years, it will be, uh, before the tax year begins. Or, and this is the key, and this is why I'm here, and this is the article I, I'd like added to the, uh, special town meeting. Or lived in Massachusetts for at least one consecutive year before the tax year begins if the legislative body of your city or town has voted to accept this local option. So that's essentially what the town would be voting for, for the one year.
And that was brought up last town meeting, but there was a clerical issue or error?
Yeah, I'm not too sure. I didn't bring it up then. I think somebody from the assessor's board did, and, and then they withdrew it and, and voted. It was voted to pass. It was a little, it was a little confusing for me, but I'd like to bring it up as an article and, and follow through that it does get voted for.
So, what you're asking for is support from us for an article put on the next town meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To reduce it from two years to one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, the two years goes into effect July one of next year. So, what we can do is we can vote to, uh,
July also one year.
No, it goes from five years to two years in July, and he's asking, excuse me, for an exception, for the town to go to one year for, for anybody that meets the criteria of twenty-two D. So he wants to decrease it from five years right now to one year. July one of next year, it'll go to two years automatically from five years.
Yep.
Yeah.
And this kind of illustrates, I don't know if you've seen this or not, I have four copies.
I actually have a copy.
That's okay. Yeah, thank you.
Just so you can read a little snapshot, page four in the clause.
Do you have a question? Can I ask you a question? So, um, at the two-year point, does the state reimburse, um, any of the property taxes? So, so for the two-year exemption, the state kicks in. But the local option, the state doesn't provide the funds for that. A town has to be willing to do that. You know, it's just a shame, like, if the state is doing this, you know, why are they putting a town, you know, I mean, basically, it should be a regional or statewide thing. You know, to, to say, we're going to change the law and we're going to reimburse, uh, towns' property taxes for veterans, uh, starting with year two. I just don't understand why then they say, but, if a town wants to lower it to one and pay the tax year for a surviving spouse. I just, you know, I just have a, it's just unfortunate that they pin sort of a town against a town. Not that people, you know, unfortunate people who lose a spouse in service, I mean, who's going to be searching around for a town to not have to pay taxes to? But it's just the whole idea of it, that the state is not, you know, they're saying, oh, you know, we're going to do the two-year, but, you know, if you want, you can do a one-year thing. I just, I just think it's.
Well, that's why they, they leave it up to the town, and I understand, I, I agree with what you're saying, and it's somewhat disappointing. They do leave it up to town. I guess it depends on the, um, the commitment from the town, their financial situation.
But it's good it's going to two years.
It's great that it's going to two years.
It is two, and.
It's a little closer.
And if they were living in the town for six months prior to leaving for the service, they're still eligible immediately, correct?
And, and that's tricky. That's where, um, the assessors and, um, the office could interpret it a certain way. Because some parts of the law, if you read it, it'll say if, if you have lived in, or if the service member had lived in, uh, the town six months prior to entering service, and some parts will say immediately prior to. So I look at it as, well, yeah, this veteran did actually. It's not only that this person is back in the, is, is lives in the state now, they're, they're originally from Massachusetts. And this person, particular person, I'm, I'm kind of lobbying for here, trying to help her out, um, she's from Southampton. So, it, um, but it's, you know, the law can be interpreted different ways, that prior to and immediately prior to, because different parts of the law will say. But to answer your question, um, this is, I printed out the law, um, this clause of law today, so it's just current. But, the best answer I can give you is, is just, there's just one little paragraph here, it says, no real estate shall be exempt under this clause if it was conveyed to the surviving spouse to evade taxation. That's just a, a little footnote in that paragraph. The amount of the exemption shall be borne by the Commonwealth, and the state treasurer shall annually reimburse the city or town for the amount of the tax which otherwise would have been collected for this exemption. So I'm not too sure they don't reimburse if it's reduced to one year. It doesn't say specifically. May, maybe they don't. I, I just can't answer clearly. This is all that I know.
I'm just wondering if Martha O'Dorick has any.
Yes, they don't. They haven't changed it. It used to be they, the town paying.
Want to come up?
O'Dorick Dodge Assessors. According to what DLS told us a few months ago, they haven't changed their reimbursement policy. If the town elects local option for the period of adoption, now being reduced from four years to one, we still pay the bill. Once the time has ticked by, and the recipient is, is validated for the two-year period, then the state reimbursement kicks in, and we go back to where we live. And for what it's worth, we also had to go out and get an interpretation from the DLS attorneys about the immediately prior versus prior, or however it's worded exactly, I've forgotten. And, uh, according to the attorneys, the state's intent was immediacy. They didn't want somebody to have lived in town for six months as a child, grow up somewhere else, join the military, suffer some sort of a military loss of life, and then have an eligible spouse. That really wasn't the point. They were looking for immediacy. And in fact, uh, one of the keys is, is where they were domiciled at the time they headed out to whatever the, um, enlistment or recruitment center is, or however that's worded. So, we did get that interpretation. Immediacy was what the state meant, even if they didn't take the pains to put it in every single wording of the law. Question?
So, on, on this particular case, it's got to be a warrant on the town meeting. So, as we discussed, you've got to submit a warrant, and so the best we can do right now is support this warrant going on the, this article going on the next town warrant, because we can't make any decisions here. So, I don't think, any, is anybody not in favor of this article going forward? Uh, it's more for the town to decide if they want to do it or not, I think, it's, rather than us, and, and we don't really have a decision because it's got to be a town meeting.
And what's fortunate is, is it, it was five years and then going from one year, so then you have that four-year where the town doesn't get reimbursed. But now it's only just a one year.
Right.
And, and some, you know, some, whether it's, I mean, some of that information, I'd like to really kind of see it and, and read it before I believe it, the interpretation, um, because it's, it's all subjective.
Just a question, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with who you're lobbying for, but you suggested it while you're, while you're up there. Does going from the five to the two solve the problem for the person you're lobbying for, or does it need to go from five to one?
It will eventually, yes. It depends how, once it's vote, if, if it's, if it does, if the article does get added to the special town meeting, and it does get voted for, it could help them immediately.
The five to two?
The five to two.
Which doesn't harm the town.
It'll, in this case, it's almost overlapping, because she's been here.
Yeah, and this would have to be voted on at a town meeting, which maybe it's going to be January, end of January, February. Then it has to go to the AG's office, they have to make a decision on it. If I remember the conversation, Ed, that could take thirty days, sixty days, so it's butting up against this new law coming in July, so.
But that's for that one person. There could be somebody else.
Right, granted, but this particular person, yeah.
Yeah, but fortunately for that one person, and, you know, I mean, we're, you know, we, we, you know, people say we support the veterans, and we have a wonderful Memorial Day parade and event, and that's really nice. Um, the Veterans Day, um, event celebration at the school, that's really hosted by the school. So if you really step back and look at things, what do we really do as a community? What are we really doing that's not required by the state? It was, you know, it's excellent that now, you know, we're certainly a, a Purple Heart town, and, and the board voted for that. And that's really, you're, you're doing, we, we elected to, to support the veterans and do everything we can, so this is an opportunity. So if it's there and it's an opportunity, I doubt very much people are going to flock to Southampton because it's from the two-year to one year, but it's like, you know what, we, we say what we mean, and we're going to do what we say, so.
Jerry, are there any other communities that have elected the local option that you're aware of?
I, I have not researched that, but I plan on doing that prior to the, because that's a great question. Prior to the town meeting. But I know there's, there's communities that have, um, totally, you know, even inside, there's people that have resided in town for over five years, ten, fifteen, twenty years, and they have not given those people, um, spouses of, of deceased, uh, military members, a hundred percent disabled or deceased, uh, they haven't given the full exemption. There's, there's an interesting article about the town aware, and, um, they just did everything they could to not do it, and then they finally got caught, I guess. So it's, I know I, for sure, I've heard of towns doing the opposite, but I, I'm sure there are many towns that have elected to do that, but I can't. I don't want to say that.
But you're going to do a little, little background before the town. I mean, I personally think it's a perfect article to put on the town meeting floor and let people decide.
Exactly, and it, it says it right here, so the legislative body of the town to vote, so.
I think the questions all have to be, you know, answered beforehand, so that the people of the town know, what is, you know, is the immediacy question? Just, you know, because these questions are coming up in this room, so they're going to come up in a larger format. And also, you know, what is the tax, you know, what, what would be an average amount of, you know, money? I mean, it's a, it's a small town, so it's not exactly going to be a lot.
I don't think so, no, and, I mean,
And hopefully it's not.
I've said it before.
I would hope it'd be nobody, right?
Right. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we wouldn't be here and have the right to vote.
Yeah.
You know, we, we've been in the. You know, we've been in the hole, maybe, you know, it just, you know, it goes one hand washes the other, and it's, I don't know. How much of a difference will it really make? How much of a difference are we going to make to that widow or widower and that family?
There will be other people who were between this two- and five-year waiting period, who now will become eligible, and the state would reimburse. Are you aware, are there, are there? That's a question.
Between two and the five, no. There's, there's people over the five years. There's people that have been here over five years, and their spouses deceased, not necessarily killed in combat, but due to a service-related disability, and they don't even know.
They don't know about.
That's something you, you should promote out there.
I try, I try my best.
Is that something put on the town website?
I've actually called somebody and said, you are eligible for this, and they just don't even, some people don't want to be bothered. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. Even for the benefits under my program, just, some people are just set in their ways, and they don't want to, they're.
Best you can do is inform them.
Right, so, no, there's, there's one person now, I know for sure, that's inside that timeframe, and that's it.
Okay, so if you could put an article together, working with Ed, and, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now back to town clerk temporary appointment. Ed?
Certainly. And just so the board's aware, because I found out this today, is there's actually two options to appoint a temporary town clerk. And the original, the only one I knew of before today was appoint the temporary town clerk till the next election, which would be May, the third Tuesday in May of 2019. KP Law informed me today that actually, in this case, the board could do that, or the board could also choose to appoint a temporary town clerk till the end of the existing term for the current elected town clerk, which would be May of 2021. So those are the two options. We had two people apply for the temporary town clerk position. And basically, I had advertised it as being an appointment till May of 2019. We had one internal candidate and one candidate from outside the town apply. I would say both candidates' background experience, time experience in town clerk offices were pretty much similar. And I would say that they would both be able to do the job for the town of Southampton. In this particular case, and I, and I talked to our current town clerk, Janine, about this too. Just to see if I was off base or whatever, and, and both Janine and I came back with the same recommendation. We would like to recommend, or I would like to recommend to the board that you appoint our actual current assistant town clerk, Lucy Dalton, to the temporary town clerk's position. Whether you do that to May of 2019 or to May of 2021 is up to you. Obviously, by doing this, it creates a little bit of more work because what we'll have to do also, if you do appoint the current assistant town clerk, is we're going to have to backfill that position. That position would become the appointment of the temporary town clerk. The board could put the stipulation on that, because it's within your power, and you're going to be appointing the person rather than elected. You could put the stipulation on there that the temporary town clerk may appoint, hire a assistant town clerk or a temporary assistant town clerk, but that it also is subject to the approval of the board of selectmen. But my first recommendation is that the board appoint Lucy Dalton as the temporary town clerk.
Okay, so we've heard the recommendation from, from Ed, and he, like I said, he interviewed two people. So if, we've got to discuss this, but you want to discuss it before we go into a motion?
I move to appoint Lucy Dalton as the temporary town clerk.
Okay, let's, okay, let's do a second, then we can talk about it, because there's some changes, I think.
I'll second that.
Okay, so can you amend your motion so that we appoint Lucy until the May?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. And also have the caveat that when she appoints an assistant town clerk, that she put the applicant before the board of selectmen for their approval. I think that should be all in one motion.
Okay. Do you have that, or do you want me to say it all over again? Okay, I move that we approve Lucy Dalton as the temporary, temporary.
Before you do that, you've already got a vote and a motion on here, so you can amend your motion.
Okay, I'm amending my motion to include the term of the temporary appointment would be until the next election in May of 2019.
Which would be May 21st, if you wanted the exact date.
Twenty first of 2019, and that the assistant town clerk be selected by the temporary town. But it's, but brought forward to the select board for final approval.
Right, so would you amend your second?
Jim's second.
Oh, Jim?
I'll amend my second.
Okay, now, now discussion over all that.
I mean, this is very hard to discuss without knowing who the other candidate is.
Well, but it, yes and no, but it's up to Ed, I think, as a town administrator, to bring that forward because it's a temporary appointment. It's not an elected position at this point, but.
Can I ask another question?
You're welcome to ask the questions, though.
How does this affect the fact that the townspeople voted last May to make the town clerk position be an appointed position as opposed to elected position? So how does all this affect that?
It doesn't. You want to?
Yeah, I'll be happy to address that. Basically, also in May of 2019, there will be a, actually, there'll be two ballot questions, but one will be shall the town clerk, and the other shall be, shall the treasurer-collector be appointed rather than elected? Though, those will be on the ballot. They may pass, they may not pass. If they don't pass, it just goes on as far as elections in the future. If.
Yeah, but elections, is somebody going to run for that office in May? And then if the ballot question passes, then we get to a point in that election?
What would happen if it passed is that the person elected in May would be for a two-year term, which would be the rest of Janine's term to fill that out. At the end of that two-year term, then it would become an appointed position.
Okay, so either way, in May, it's going to be elected, the person will be elected.
Right, people will run for a two-year term.
The, the only way it would not is if the board decided that rather than to appoint a temporary town clerk to May 21st, 2019, that the board wanted to appoint a temporary town clerk to
Finish Janine's term.
May 2021.
Which would finish Janine's term.
Right.
Which would finish Janine's term. Then, if the ballot question passed, you would have had an appointed temporary town clerk that would become an appointed, well, then you would appoint a permanent town clerk. Might not be the same person, or it could be the same person, don't know. And if the ballot question did not pass, then in May of 2021, it would become an elected.
So, so right now, all we're saying is we're going to appoint a temporary town clerk until May 21st, 2019, when we'll have an election, and probably multiple people will run for it, closing the temporary. Why, I lost that train of thought.
You got it, and then somebody will be elected from that to finish.
Right, somebody will be elected from that, and it'll be two years to finish Janine's term.
And then from then on, if the ballot question passes, it'll be appointed.
And that's the key, if the ballot question passes and.
Doesn't pass, it will keep on with the election process.
Right, exactly. So we've got, any other discussion on that?
Well, could I just ask the question? Do we want to also limit the assistant town clerk appointment until, until May of 2019?
That's a hire, though, Ed, correct, rather than?
I know, it's a, it's a hire.
It's a hire, and I mean, you could do it on a temporary basis and say, yes, we're doing this till May 21st, 2019.
So that comes back to us.
Yeah.
Or you could do, do it without doing that, the term to it, and then basically, that person would continue in that position. So that, that is another choice. You're correct.
Yeah, and the other thing about that is whoever gets elected in May has the option of appointing who they want as the assistant town clerk, because that's their purview, so who knows what'll change then? So is that a modification, or is it a no?
I asked the question. I mean, it's up to the group to decide if you want to leave it, if you want that to be part of, want me to make a motion to that effect?
The appointment should, the appointment for the assistant should be temporary as well, correct?
That was my, that was my question.
They should be, both be temporary until.
Both of them expire.
May 21st, 2019.
Yeah, so that whoever, whoever earns that.
Whatever you want to do.
That's what we just said.
That person could appoint their own anyways, because that person works for them.
Yeah, but we'll make it clean, not, not somebody's going to be hired for that position and then fired at that point. It just makes it cleaner, I think.
But you're setting it up so they will be terminated. Is that what you're saying?
Necessarily.
Or may not.
Same person runs and makes it in there, they may keep that person in.
Yeah, I think we need to clean it up.
That's all, that's all I'm raising.
I, I think it dirties it up, but that's my opinion. I think if she's just, she or he is just appointed, that person can be continuous, and, but.
If they're hired.
Depends where three votes go, I guess.
I mean, I just, I've just thought about it. If you want to consider it, otherwise, you know, we can drop it.
Well, can we finish this vote, and then we can go back if we want to do one of those, of that. So now the vote is temporary town clerk till May 21st, 2019, with the caveat that whoever this person hires will come back to us for final approval. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, unanimous. So do you want to bring that other conversation forward?
I move that the temporary assistant town clerk be hired up to and through May 21st, 2019, to coincide with either the, the, a new election or a ballot question.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I want to be opposed, because I think it, just the continuity is, won't be as good, but I often get outvoted. Hey, thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
And you'll let Lucy know?
I absolutely will.
Congratulations. Okay, discussion on adding additional documents to select board meeting notices. Renee, I believe, you brought that in?
Francine.
Francine? Is that yours?
Yes. The question came up, was posed to me, about the fact that the select board posts its agenda on the town website, mytown.gov, but does not necessarily include any of the supporting documentation that we're looking at and discussing that is essentially public information, and whether or not these documents could be uploaded onto the town website at the same time the agenda is posted, so that we're all looking at the same thing. That was basically the issue.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I guess the, the question is, they're all public records, so that's not an issue. I would imagine the only other thing is time, time to put them up there. Is that correct?
Well, we still don't have a way to post these documents into MyTown.
Really?
Oh, actually.
Just upload the packet as if it were the agenda.
Yeah, can you scan them in?
The agenda is posted as a, as a file.
The agenda is copied over from a Word document and pasted in. Everything else is scanned as a PDF. So it's two totally different processes.
Can you copy and paste the PDF?
I've never, I don't know if you can copy and paste the PDF. And then the flip side of that is, I don't know what the capacity of one meeting is, as far as how many documents. And currently, we are on a free, that software is free to us. At some point, with the agreement that the town had signed with that, there is only X capacity for all the towns that participate. Once that's exceeded, then we will have to pay for the software. And I don't know how quick that will happen, so there are some.
So basically, like, we're operating under, under a certain capacity, and if we exceed the capacity, which of course, like, if we just, if we exceed the capacity, then we're going to be on the hook for some storage fees or whatever you want.
Correct.
But that's at MyTown?
Right.
How about if we just post it on our website?
That's another option I was thinking of, that I'm sure that we could do. I mean, the two are, the two are not together. Someone would have to know to go look for it, but that, that, that is an alternative at this point.
The alternative, the free, or, well, it's not necessarily free, but it's close to free. And this would be something, Ed, for your, for your assistant, when you, when you're, you're admin, when you get one. But couldn't we post like a Dropbox link to a Dropbox folder?
Just put a link there.
Just put a link on the town website, if you want to look at the documents, and you go right into that file.
Yeah, you can just restrict.
It's just the public, it's just the, the packet that you put together without the executive session. It's just a Dropbox link.
Yeah, we could look at that.
Okay, so it sounds like we're all interested in having it done, so if you could look into it and get back to us when you can?
Absolutely.
Great, thanks, Francine. Any other necessary business that cannot await the December 11th regular select board meeting? Is there anything we haven't talked about so far that needs to come up?
It's only eight thirty.
Okay, personal change forms. This is going to be a little interesting. Number twelve and thirteen, both for Catherine Workman. Pardon?
They're crossed off.
Right, I'm saying they're crossed off because they're requiring PQB action, in case somebody has a copy of the agenda out there. So PQB will discuss on November 29th. Now, the other three are still here, but they don't have sign off by the finance committee. But Ed, I believe you wanted to make a request on those?
Well, the finance committee tried to have a meeting. They did not have a quorum, so I, and I didn't realize that when I put these on here, but we won't meet again until, I think it's December 11th. So I, we have on a couple of occasions taken them out of order to quicken the process. I didn't know if the board wanted to do that with these, or wait till finance actually does meet and approve them, and then put them back on a future agenda, so.
Have they been signed off by the town accountant?
They've been signed off by the town accountant and the PPPB.
And the department head.
And the department head, yes.
So if we.
Because one of them, and if you look at your copies, you'll notice that the department head had not signed off. I had actually caught that and called it to their attention, so they came in and signed it. So the originals now have everything except select board and finance signatures.
So normally, we, we stick to the rules and say we don't do this out of order, but I'm interested to hear.
I don't have a problem with everybody else signed it, just if we approve it pending approval from finance. And if they disallow it, then it's.
I don't think that's what you're looking for, though, Ed, is it?
No, it's fine.
Pending finance?
Yeah, because technically, they wouldn't go into effect anyway until finance. All I was, all I was trying to do is say, rather than have finance committee meet and then wait for us on the 11th, if the board was willing to sign pending their signature, if they met before that, then it would have all the signatures and they would go into effect.
And all of these are consistent with their department budgets, correct?
That's why I asked about.
And that's what finance.
Well, Vicky signed off on it, so that's.
I don't want to hold up the departments.
So is that a motion?
A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve these three PCS pending approval by the finance committee.
Two PCS and one PRF. Two PCS and one PRF.
Yeah, two PCS, one PRF, just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Right.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Got unanimous?
Thank you.
Licenses and permits, none. Francine, would you like to read the warrants that you signed?
Warrant 19-19 for $1,443,667.21. Warrant P 18-20 for $272,372.81. And warrant PD 19-20 for $44,004.67.
There's no motion needed since they've already been signed, that's just for the record. Do you mind passing those out there? Okay, other documents requiring signature, none. Minutes to approve, October 25th, 18, and November 13th, 18. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
And I will tell you that I believe you only have the November 13th minutes in your package.
Yeah, we only have the 13th here, so we can't do the October ones.
Right.
That wasn't here, so.
One was an executive one.
I saw a couple of small grammar issues, but I'm not going to worry about those. Besides that, is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept the November 13th regular session meeting minutes?
I moved. With somebody else.
Would you second it, then?
I'll second it.
Okay, did you get those, Catherine? Reenie and Francine? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I got to tell you, open time for the public, there's a lot of people out here who are still sitting here, so I'm guessing this is, this is what it's for. So we have open time for the public. I'm not going to read all the, the rules and regulations, just be courteous and keep it to five minutes. So does anybody want to talk? You just line up here and feel free to come up to the podium, say who you are, where you live, and.
Okay.
We have a frequent flyer here.
Tammy, Walunis 298 College Highway. I just want to expand on Mr. K. Hillings and Dr. Lincoln Hoker's view on Smith Folk. Besides having quite a few students from our town and quite a few teachers or admin from town, there are quite a few parents that are very active in the PTO from town. And there are several businesses in town that have helped, which has helped the PTO with their events at Smith Folk. So I'd like to say a huge thank you to those businesses that have helped. I mean, yes, Smith Folk is in North Hampton, but we do have a lot of students and parents here, teachers, admin, that really do support it. So that was all I wanted to say.
Your daughter goes there, right?
My daughter's a senior and my son's a freshman.
Yeah, and for what you've said, it's been a great, great experience.
Very good. Yep, they're leaving there with traits on their hands and working.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
I'll go. Hello, good evening to the board. My name is David Brevellary, I live at 53 Gilbert Road. I'm here with a group of neighbors, but I'll kind of read you what our concerns are. I'm here, I'm here with a concerned group of neighbors who share a common driveway on Gilbert Road. Our concern has to do with this, do with a cease and desist order issued on October 18th, 2018, to Matthew DeSault of 71 Gilbert Road for the operation of a commercial gym on his property, which is part of the common driveway shared by 11 homes. The cease and desist order was issued for zoning violations and for the operation of a commercial gym by the town of Southampton, based upon information provided by the residents of the common drive who oppose the illegal operation. These residents were also asked by the town of the, of Southampton to provide proof that the activity was still ongoing. After the cease and desist order was issued by Mr. DeSault, he took action by filing harassment complaint against Mr., against Mr. Janice, Mr. Janice Jasek of 69 Gilbert Road with the, with Hampshire, with the Hampshire Court for taking pictures of the commercial gym operation. Mr. Jasek went, went to the scheduled court hearing with a letter from the town of Southampton, issued by Tom Quinlan, the building commissioner, explaining his actions. He also brought a copy of the cease and desist order for the court. During the court hearing, Mr. DeSault stated that the court, to the court, that the cease and desist order was only issued to, issued by the town of Southampton to quiet the people who think he is running a commercial gym. He also stated that the select board was okay with what he is doing. Our question to the board is, are these accurate statements of the town's position that he is making? Because it is apparent that based on the current documented activities surrounding the commercial gym operation, Mr. DeSault does not recognize or respect the town of Southampton's authority to issue or enforce a cease and desist order regarding the operation of a commercial gym on his property on 71 Gilbert Road, Southampton, Mass., as it is still in operation.
The question is, do we support them running a commercial gym?
Yes.
Tom Quinlan, building commissioner, has issued a cease and desist order, which, at least from my point of view, I'm, I'm behind him 100%, and the others can, can speak on that, too. We never formally said anything about that as far as supporting it.
We've never discussed this.
Yeah, this board has never discussed that subject.
Never came before us before.
Oh, no, okay.
We're not allowed to discuss things that aren't open, at open meetings.
Yeah, but we fully support Mr. Quinlan.
Okay, thank you. We just have a few people, I don't know if anyone wants to address the board.
You've been here two and a half hours, if you want to come up here and, and speak.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming. And if you wanted, sorry, if you wanted to get something on the agenda, if you could talk to Ed, that would be on the agenda, that way we could have invited Tom to come and, and all that, I understand.
We just kind of just felt an urgent need at the last minute.
We appreciate it.
And we wanted to come, we didn't want to miss the opportunity.
Okay.
It's perfectly come, perfectly fine to come and speak during the public time also, so thank you for coming. We are 100% behind Tom, Tom in the cease and desist order.
Okay, thank you very much.
Definitely.
And I think it was out of line to suggest that the select board is behind it without consulting us, this has never been discussed on the agenda of a select board meeting.
I do, too. I feel that way, too.
Not, not for you, for the person.
Yeah, not, not for you.
Sorry to keep you here so long, but thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I just had a question for the board.
Sure, you have to say your name.
I'm Joy Talifer from 67 Gilbert Road, I'm also a neighbor of this disaster that we're experiencing over there. My question to you is, I was told that he applied for a new zoning that will allow him to have family and friends attend that gym. How can we find out if that's happening?
Does ZBA?
It would be notified, doesn't it bother?
Yeah, it should be notified. I, I do know, because Tom told me, that the resident has filed with the ZBA for an, for an appeal. I have not seen the agenda as of yet, I know the ZBA does have a meeting they are scheduling in December on the 17th, I don't know what is exactly on that agenda, but if it is on the agenda, you should receive a notification, as in a butter.
I, I believe it's a certified letter that you'll get in the mail, as in a butter, saying here's what the meeting, when the meeting is, what it's all about.
You have to be an immediate a butter?
An a butter, or an a butter to the butter, I believe, is how it works.
Yes, it depends what he goes for, if he, if he's just on the agenda to talk to him, or is he going for a variance? If he's going for a variance, then you will be notified by registered mail. But if he's just going to talk to him, I, I don't know, I don't know the situation that they're doing.
That's a good point. On our website, go to the ZBA.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, have the agenda there before the meeting, so you can look at the agenda and see if this person is going there to discuss it, and if he is or she is, you can go to the meeting also and weigh in on it.
It's open to the public.
It's open to the public.
So would we be able to talk to the board about this vote? Like, do we have any say in it at all, being a butters?
If he brings it up for an official variance.
We don't, we don't want it rezoned, obviously, because it's very disruptive, it's, it's creating a lot of problems, not only amongst the neighbors, there's additional traffic, there's less privacy, it's a private, small road that we pay to have paved, the whole thing, it's, it's not, it shouldn't be there.
Yeah, Mr. Quinlan has explained that, and he, I think he agrees just with what you're saying.
So I just want to make sure what our rights are if he applies to have it rezoned.
If he officially applies, then you'll be notified, but as I think Jim Redd was just saying, if he's just going to discuss it, it'll be on the agenda, and you won't be notified, but look at the agenda for the next meeting and bring your group there.
Okay, thank you very much.
So there's contact information for all the committees on our Southampton website, so I, you know, if I were you, I would contact the zoning board of appeals and, and ask, you know, ask them, there's no reason why they can't do that also, and I would show up.
It's just that the entire thing got built really without, without us really knowing, so I don't want to be in the same situation, to be caught when he gets it rezoned and then we have no say.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, officially, if he tries to get it rezoned, you'll be notified, but why wait that long? Why not go till, if he's just having a general hearing on it?
Yeah, most definitely.
I believe you could go into the website and have it notify you if the agenda comes up. Automatically, we'll send you an email.
So you can like go on the zoning board website.
When the agenda is filed, they'll send you out.
Put your email in, and it will ping you every time a meeting's scheduled.
Right.
Same for Zoning Board of Appeals.
But that's on MyTown government, or is that on our general website?
MyTown government.
MyTown government. You go to that.
Website, if you just go to the town website, you'll be able to navigate to it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Come back any other time to the meeting, we like the crowd. Anybody else for open time? No? We are going to go into executive session, and we won't be coming back into open session. We're going to take a five-minute break in between, so we need a motion to go into executive session, and before we do that, I'll, I'll read why. Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, A, Section 21A, Number 3, Discuss Strategy, Respect to Collective Bargaining, which is a Local 98 International Union of Operators Engineers for the Highway Department. Again, under the same Mass. General Law for the Police Officers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Third is under the same law for the Dispatchers, New England Benevolent Police Association. Fourth session is under the same law for the East Street Bridge. And the fifth is for Mass. General Law, 30A, Section 21A, Number 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. It's for the approval of executive session minutes, October 25th, 18, and November 13th, 18. Have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Okay, have a roll call, please.